Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, we'll go back into open session. This meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for September 20th, beginning at 7:22 PM. Thank you all for coming out to be with us tonight. We'll start our meeting with a opening ceremony. Mrs. Powell, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, on one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence, and while you're at it, if you would silence your cell phones and electronic devices. This is a work session meeting, so we will have no open forum, either for agenda items or for non-agenda items. And the procedures for the trustees will be a little looser than normal. Feel free to buzz in and speak as need be. If I need to bring you back to the agenda item, I'll let you know. First item on here for discussion is the strategic plan metrics, whatever that is. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Barron. This evening, we're having a discussion item on the strategic plan metrics and the measures that we will use. This is that next important step in implementing our strategic plan. As you know, we've developed action plans. We've -- the board has approved the budget amendment in moving forward. The next critical piece that we've been working on with Elaine Say, who will come up here in a minute, is developing those measures and those metrics. It's important to have a comprehensive measurement system for the strategic plan in order to keep track of our progress, number one, to report to our community, but more importantly, to meet those objectives, that we know are bold objectives and ones we want to accomplish. So Elaine has -- Elaine, if you'd come up to the podium. Elaine Say is our external consultant for this process. She has a presentation, and before she starts, I'll just say that it really has been a pleasure working with Elaine. She's very focused and driven on this, on this measurement of our strategic plan. She's worked closely with Dr. Carter in terms of the metrics that we currently use and the processes we have. And so we've spent a lot of time, senior staff has, with Elaine in working on this. So Elaine?
Great, thank you. Members of the board and Dr. Cavazos, I'm glad to be here to talk to you about the strategic plan measures that the administration leadership team and I have worked on together to develop. And so we will jump right in here. Just a little graphic that sort of portrays the components of the strategic plan. We've already established, obviously, the vision, the goals, the objectives, and the strategies. And the staff has developed the action plans that contain the strategies. And they have -- we've developed a system that will periodically review those action plans and what progress has been made on those throughout the first year. And then what we want to talk to tonight about is the actual measures that we'll use and look at annually to determine, as Dr. Cavazos said, the kind of progress that we're making on the plan. We decided that the action plans would be reviewed on a four-month cycle, and since those really have just gone in place fairly recently, we thought that would be a timely reporting format. And so the staff will write their description of their progress on the action plans for each activity that's supposed to occur in that four-month period, and then we'll summarize that information and bring that back to you at the end of that four-month cycle. So the first reporting back on progress would be in November meeting. And the annual measures then, of course, look at the annual progress. So you get the implementation through the action plans, the annual progress through the measures. The measures that we'll review tonight, we want to review them with you so that we all have a common understanding of the kind of information we'll be collecting, the kind of data we'll be looking at to determine whether or not the goals and objectives of the district have been met. And we want to reach agreement that these are the measures that comprise a comprehensive set of measures that will give us the picture that we want to see of the district. And it's important, before we start looking at the individual measures, to talk about what the measures are and are not. The measures will be reported on district-level data, but not on campus-level data. Because it's a district plan, so we want to look at district outcomes. The measures, though, that we're reporting and we're going to be looking at are not -- these will not replace any of the current district reports and any kind of information that you normally would have received outside of this strategic plan. And where appropriate, we want to aggregate the data or disaggregate the data by groups so that you can look at the different -- the way different groups perform on different measures. We also want to look at these measures as being more fluid than static and that they could be modified. You can delete one later or add another later if it seems to be an appropriate measure. It is important that you have the capacity to do that because oftentimes, you'll start collecting a measure and find that that might not be the most appropriate way to go, and you need to make some modifications. Also, the data we're talking about tonight won't be reflected in the action plans that the staff have developed. So this is data that will be collected outside of what they're doing, but of course be collected by staff within the district. And these measures are trying to gauge success at the highest possible level. And what that means is, there might be six different ways to measure a particular attribute that you're looking at, but we want to get the one that's the most comprehensive, and we don't want to have to have all six measures. We want to try to measure at the level that will be most comprehensive. And that these measures are not -- don't have a one-to-one correspondence with the action plans. So you wouldn't look at one action plan and say, "This is the measure for that," or even "One goal, and this is the measure for that goal," or so forth. So there's not a one-to-one correspondence. We like to think about these measures as a set of measures that will work across to give us a good picture of the outcomes of the strategic plan process. And that's important because there's so much overlap in what happens in schools. If you think about what happens in a classroom, it's the teacher's skills, but it's also the curriculum we've asked them to teach, and it's the kids that come into that classroom and the experiences they've had, and what happens to them throughout the rest of the school day and experience. So you can't always say, "This particular measure only measures the success of this one piece," because there's so much overlap. And you'll find, as we go through these, what we've done is, we've connected the measures to inspired learners, effective leadership, and engaged community. And so you'll see that for each measure, we've said kind of where it fits in that framework, and we've also said where it fits, which goals it particularly is most closely associated with. And what you'll find is that some are, you know, I could almost make the case that every outcome is connected to highly effective teachers, and almost every outcome, you know, could be contributed to effective leadership kind of thing. So we've done sort of an intuitive match, but I think there could be some, you know, maybe, you know, disagreement about whether this should or should not be included as a match. But I think across all the measures, you'll see that they enfold and encompass all of the goals and the objectives of the district. So we're going to jump right in here in a moment. We've already talked about that they're not specifically tied to objectives. We've talked about the goals, but they're also not specifically tied to the five objectives. But I think you'll see, when you look at them, that the measurement of those objectives is very evident in the measures. And we will produce an annual report. I'll produce the annual report at the end of the year. We -- I remember we talked about it in an earlier planning session, you know, when that report comes and when all that data comes. But looking at the timeline, when most of these data measures will become available, I think we can have a pretty comprehensive report available in August. Some, you know, measures will be available before that. A couple may be not available at that point in time, but, you know, we'll have to kind of go where we are and shoot for that timeframe. There's 28 measures. As I've mentioned, they're related to the framework and goals. We indicate where the -- what the data source is for the measure, and what the report, when we report out the data, what that data will look like, so you can get a more specific sense of what we say when we say student discipline. What exactly are you going to be reporting? What kind of district data are you going to be reporting? And the date, then, that that data will be measured. Okay. The inspired learners, just sort of as a refresher and so that you can see the sort of the big picture of -- inspired learners, of course, contains these five district goals: learning and achievement, higher ed, and career readiness, and then the facilities, safe and secure, and highly effective teachers. And then effective leadership deals with the culture, retaining and recruiting retaining staff, and then leadership development. And the engaged community has both parent and community engagement, and then the communication of the strategic plan and the awareness of the community that this is a premier school district. So we're jumping into the measures. Here's the first one. Now, there's only 28, so take it off. And I'm not going to go through and say, "This is inspired learners and represents the goal of learning and achievement and highly effective teachers." I'll let you read that part. I'm going to sort of focus on what it is we're going to be reporting. The first measure is STAR and EOC. So we're reporting the state assessment data for grades through 3-8, STAR, and then the end-of-course assessments. And what we'll be reporting is the percent that are reaching the satisfactory level of performance, that percent that will reach the advanced academic level, so level two and three, or whatever the state, you know, finally decides they're going to call them, which these represent those levels. And then we'll disaggregate that data by subject area, of course, and we'll compare performance to Texas, because if you're going to be a premier district, you certainly want to be doing better than Texas overall. And we'll always display them by the accountability groups or by the set of groups that are most interested in the district. So think of accountability -- when I -- when we say groups, think about the accountability groups as the likely reporting framework there. And these data will be available to the district toward the end of July, early August, so these will be able to be included. Also, we anticipate that the state will be able to make some sort of data available to us from STAR, at least in reading and math, about student growth. And so if and when the state is able to do that, we will want to add that as a measure for the strategic plan, the percent of students that will make, you know, a year's growth or more. So that will be another piece we will want to add.
Before we go to the second one, can I ask a question real quick? Do we want to go through all 28 and then come back and ask questions? Do we want to go through and ask questions after each of the proposed measurements? There are 28.
28. So since this is a work session, feel free to ask questions.
So then I do have a question here. Is this any different from what we already get in terms of
No.
the STAR test reporting that we get at the end of the year?
The only difference in terms of measurement on this one is that one year or more progress and growth. That's different in terms of us looking at it as a district. And then the other is comparing against the state and making that our external measure. But in terms of the reports and STAR data and all that, that's what we get from the state. The difference in terms of emphasis here is the state comparison, as using that as our external measure, and then the making a point of comparing and using this as a metric of making one or more year of progress that we haven't done.
And what do we use to measure the one or more year of progress? Is that internal
No.
our growth, like Arlington Growth Index, or is that something different?
That is, if it becomes available from the state. The state has, as part of their promise, if you will, to be able to give us that type of information, whether a student made growth or not. And that's what we would use, and our standard would be one year or more of progress or growth.
Yeah. It's not the AGI.
Right, it's not.
But if the state doesn't give it to us, we don't have the capability of figuring it out?
Not with AGI. No, because we compare -- that's compared to just the district.
Okay.
At this point. And they have to have a system really to have that kind of comparison.
Okay.
And in looking at the kind of information that the Accountability Task Force, statewide task force, that's working on developing the system for this year, it is -- becomes pretty evident that there will be a measure for growth. And it may not be, you know, rolled out in the first year, but hopefully it'll be something that comes out soon. Because I think that'll be, you know, a very important component is measuring not only where you are, but how far you came.
I have a question, Elaine, over here.
Sure.
As we go through these, one of the things that I'm -- in looking at this beforehand, not really connecting the dots, with measure one as an example, inspired learners is learning and achievement, which is the goal one. Is there something in there throughout the measures that will tell us, you know, our goal one is technology-rich district with leading-edge learning, promoting engagement, et cetera, et cetera? Are there measures specifically for determining that, yes, we are now a technology-rich district as an example, as part of that goal? Is that defined in these metrics? Are we missing that?
That is not defined as an outcome.
Okay.
It could be defined as an outcome. It's likely to be addressed in the facilities plan, and we do have a measure in that context that may work toward that. When we get to that measure, I think we should think about that again.
Okay.
About whether or not that will, you know, work to measure that piece.
Okay.
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 And there are other ways that that can be measured through, besides just knowing how much technology
Right.
we have, but also looking at perceptions of staff and parents and community in terms of how that's used, perceptions of students in terms of whether or not they have access to technology in their classroom instruction. So I think we can come about it from several different ways without having a specific measure that says, "Are we a technology-rich district?" But I think you'll see that across the measures.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
That's a good question, because that's one kind of reason why we don't try to tie so directly.
Right.
Because technology-rich is going to cross over lots of different arenas in terms of measure and everything.
Yeah. And that's just the technology, that's my example, but I think I probably have those same kind of
Yeah.
questions on
Some other
making sure that we're actually hitting the verbiage in those goals
Okay.
besides the overarching learning and achievement kind of things.
Okay.
Thanks.
And I do want to say, you know, we started out with a STAR EOC, which is, of course, in the state accountability system, but there are very few measures in -- among these 28 that come from the -- well, that come from the accountability system. There are more measures that aren't assessment of student measures, are not testing outcomes for academic performance than there are, I mean, so when you see all 28, I think you'll see how this fits in with the big picture. Okay? The second measure is
I had a question.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry.
It's a process question, a clarifying question on where we are this evening. The -- when we collect this data, will we -- are we going to establish targets because -- are we going to talk about it at a different meeting because -- or is that for this evening as well? Because the -- when I look at this, this is information that we're already aggregating, and we, you know, could fall into that chronic cycle of just showing continuous improvement rather than what's the baseline, what's the target for moderate growth, intermediate growth
Right.
to the point we get to mastery, which is our goal.
Right.
So I'm having trouble seeing where we are on that this evening, so.
Okay. We have not -- no targets have been set. The first year, of course, will be baseline data. Even in EOC, the first data that gets reported really becomes baseline data, even though the testing was last year because the standards haven't been set. By the time we get that data, it's pretty much going to come, you know, like January or whatever. So if you consider this baseline data, the issue of setting targets or standards that you want to reach is one I think that has to be determined as part of the strategic plan. There is the concept of setting targets, and that's what Spring Branch School District did. They set specific targets. They just started their new plan, and they're moving to the continuous improvement look at their data where they -- but still, even though you're looking at continuous improvement, you're looking for improvement, you know pretty much intuitively what kind of -- what constitutes acceptable continuous improvement. So if you're just barely bumping up a tenth, that's different than if you're jumping up, you know, a more significant amount. But I think that's something we have to decide, or that you, as a district, has to decide whether or not you want to establish targets for year two and year three.
And is that a separate conversation, then, or is that something we want to jump into tonight? Because I would like to hear more about why Spring Branch went from one to the other.
Yeah, me too.
My thinking is one-way, but that's a whole conversation just on that
Right.
Mm-hmm.
as opposed to just on the metrics, on setting targets or not targets, or what to expect.
And there are a lot of issues around the kind of, and Wally could probably speak to this too, about the kind of curve or the kind of graph of performance that you might see in terms of change. So, you know, that conversation does need to take place.
And if I can, just as we look at this one, and again, we're one of 28, but looking at this one, we don't have -- the state hasn't set the passing standards for most of these exams, STAR test, as an example. So, you know, we will have a baseline after we get the results, when they have standards, as an example. Comparing against the state, I think you're right. At some point, we have to determine, is it one point, two points, three points above the state? You know, what's reasonable, what's actually becoming and taking you to that premier district that we're talking about. But with STAR, it gets, because we're in this transition, there is not a long history of it, like you did with TACs and others, where you could say, "It's a pretty stable test," and set those targets, and it should be, you know, in that trajectory. This year is baseline, and when we talk about student engagement, which we'll get to here in a minute, or other type of survey baselines, a lot of this year is that first baseline data that we're collecting. It's also a lot of process targets, and we haven't talked much about that, but that are not really outcomes. For example, did we complete our facilities assessment? That's a yes or a no. There's no real outcome there other than that we completed. Did we complete our curriculum audit? Again, that's a yes or a no at some point. It's a lot of detail, and a lot of comprehensive look at our curriculum and our facilities, but at the end of the year, it's a yes or a no, did we do it? And I think what, in terms of working with Elaine and putting these metrics together, it's more focused on those outcomes, which I think we've talked about in the past, and making sure that, number one, we define those outcomes and make sure that it's all connected to the plan. But then we do set targets at some point. But on this one that we're looking at, because the state hasn't set the standards, it's really, you can't really say, "Well, we want this much growth," when you don't even have standards on the test. At this point, I think eventually we'll get there.
I would just like to put a thought out there as well that I'm hopeful that we don't just look at EOC or STAR or state metric data as comparison. It's a starting point. But our strategic plan is to be a globally acknowledged premier district, and we have a ways to go. If we are only setting our marks against the state, our best-case scenario is being the best in a state which is near the bottom of the barrel nationally. And I think we're -- that's the point of the strategic plan, is to put this way above that. So I just really want to put that out there to keep that in the forefront of our minds.
And I think that's a good point. And again, I'll say again, this is that one state measure. You have to balance, you know, if you don't, I guess you can't have really a very strong strategic plan without having state test in there, because everybody in the state has state assessments. So if, as we go through this, you'll see that some of the measures are normed, and so they're normed across the nation. And we can have that bigger look beyond Texas. But that's the -- we started with the STAR, so we've kind of got on that one, but the STAR is an important, I think, measure for us and for districts, obviously, with the ratings and things like that. But as you look, and going on to number two, you'll see that that's more about a normed assessment.
Well, can we set a goal of getting the measurement where it gets to exceeding the state at some point in time? Set that as a goal and mark it? Did we achieve it by this point in time, and then we move to get past it?
Correct. Yes. I think that's
I mean, I think that's -- we want to be globally acknowledged. We have to set that as an immediate target so we can get past it.
Well, and I think that's what Tony was talking about, that I'm curious, why Spring Branch? They had those kind of metrics in place, and then they switched to what's just acceptable continual improvement. And to me, I don't, I'm very curious about that, because in my mind, I'm thinking, from hitting the marks in a business community, you don't take, that's like a step backwards. Well, we're not going to go for those targets anymore. We're just going to go, "Ah, we did pretty good."
That's correct.
So.
Do you want to address that, Elaine?
Sure. It's interesting, because in their plan, they only have one goal, and their goal is to double the number of their graduates from their schools that graduate from college, two-year, four-year degree or technical degree or technical certificate. And then they've developed measures, what they call the critical measures, things that we will see along the way during the PK-12 years that will gauge whether or not they're on track on those measures to be able to be college-ready and get through college and get the degree. So that's their perspective. Their board's position is that they don't want any state assessment in their measures because they don't think those are rigorous enough. And so the measures they're trying to look at, many of which you have in your plan, are measures that are beyond the state, that are the SAT, the ACT, norm reference test, other measures that don't use Texas as the standard, because sometimes that's not a real high standard. But from, you know, so their perspective is, they want to look at growth, and they, although they haven't set the targets, they purposely did that, but they still expect to see significant growth along the way and will bring, I think, pressure to bear and hold folks throughout the system accountable if that's not occurring. And they're implementing some things And they're, they're implementing some things in the district that they think will encourage that to happen. So, you know, it's just a, you know, kind of philosophical piece. But their goal is about as rigorous as you can get, to double the number of kids that graduate from college with, graduate from some post-secondary institution, so. Okay? Shall we jump into number two? They won't all take this long, although we said that in the staff meeting, and they, yeah. The second measure is, focuses on the K-two student reading and math skills. And we're looking at the percent of students that score at or above grade level at those early grades. And of course, we disaggregate that by grade. That's a, a measure that's already in use in the district, sort of like STAR. It's, it's really required by the state that you had at least the reading measure in place. But the district is also putting a, a measure for math in place that we can use to see if kids at that early level are on track. You can't hold people accountable at the end if you don't hold them accountable all the way through. Okay?
Are those annual, do you get that at kindergarten, at the first grade, in the second grade? So each, each year you get?
Yes. Kindergarten, first, second grade.
Okay.
And actually, they administer the instrument throughout the year, and we'll use the end-of-year results to see where kids are at the end.
I had one question from earlier on the, the presentation, as far as the reporting, three times, every four months. One of those fell in July, when typically we don't have meetings. And how, how is that discussed as far as who's, who's doing that? I mean, typically, everybody's gone, so how's that going to work?
Well, and this is part of the later discussion here, as in terms of reporting, whether you want a board presentation on that when it's ready, or you want the information and then have a board presentation. So Elaine was asking, and I think it's, at some point, we're going to discuss, is it every time she has a report, you want a board presentation of all the detail? Or do you want the report submitted to the board, and then you call for a board presentation at some point? So you're not locked into every time report to released? But that's more of a board choice.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And, you know, I would say that generally, a lot of the activities will be finished by, by May through the end of the year. But if you look at the completion dates, a lot of them go into June. So, you know, it's not just a school year, school calendar year.
In this metric here, we already have benchmarks, right? I mean, we have a, a history of what, how we've performed.
Yes.
On the DRA and DMA, yes, we do.
So there'll be historical data.
So there's historical data already that we can look at.
This is probably one of the, well, there, there may be some other areas where there's historical data. This one, for sure, there is. Okay? Third measure, now, this is a new measure that doesn't currently exist in the district. And here, we're talking about a norm reference assessment for reading, math, and science at the end of grade two. And the test will have to be selected and, and, you know, train staff to administer it and so forth. But here, what we would be looking at is performance against a national comparison group. And so we would have data that would, would be representative of the curriculum nationwide, but not necessarily a perfect match with our curriculum. But it still allows you to compare general reading performance in grade two with kids across the nation. And this would be in Spanish and in English. Okay? Good there. And just as an aside, the norm reference comparisons that the state has done in the past compared to TACs, there's not been a lot of consistency in how a student will perform on TACs and how they would perform on a norm reference test. In math, for example, the TAC score might be like this, and the, the national, the norm reference test score might be like this. And in reading, against the state test, might be up here, but on the norm reference test, it might be down here. So I think this kind of assessment will give you a much better look at the relative performance between reading and math that the state test doesn't do. Okay, measure four, this is a look at rigorous participation, rigorous course participation. This kind of information has been reported in the AEIS report that the district gets. But here, we're talking about looking at percent of kids. The definition that we have here does not match exactly what's in the state report. Because we want to look at the percent of students enrolled in dual-credit, pre-AP, AP, IB by subject, so we can see whether there's differences in terms of rigor, in terms of student participation. But we also want to see what proportion of our kids are in one or more courses. And I think that data will be a good indicator of the, I mean, if you have rigor, but kids are not participating at the same levels, it can be, you can have a different effect. So I think this will give us a, a different look at rigor across the curriculum.
Elaine, real quick on that, I've seen a lot of talk about kids not going in AP and not taking the AP test. Was there a discussion of, add again, the taking and passing of AP test?
We, we'll have another, we have another measure on that. But when Wally and I were talking, he was telling me of some plans he has already in place to look at that very issue. Every district has that issue of whether the kids that take the AP course end up taking the test. Because if only a small portion end up taking, it's generally those stronger-performing kids, because the teacher usually could influence that. And so you don't know whether their scores really represent the performance that all of those kids in that course should be showing in that course. So that, that piece will happen, that data gathering will happen in the district, yes.
Let me jump in here.
Uh-huh.
Could we tie the extra GPA points to the fact that the child, student takes and passes an AP exam? And if they don't take it and pass it, they don't get the accelerated GPA points?
We could. That's a board policy, and you could frame it a different, many different ways. One is, you get the GPA points if you take the test, because a lot of our students don't take the test. Or you get the GPA points if you take and pass the test. Those are, that's, that's a board policy to come back to the board.
That'll be a separate discussion. Thank you. Keep going.
Okay.
I had a question too, on the percent of students enrolled in one or more rigorous. I know you mentioned earlier about this information being disaggregated. Will that be disaggregated as well?
Yes, for sure.
Great, okay.
Because you may see some trends in that data too.
Okay, great, thank you.
And what, what about considering just measuring total number of hours of pre-AP or IB courses taken, or total number of hours per student? That may give us kind of an indication how much, because some of these students are taking two, three, four classes. And so that gives us just the percent that are taking more than one.
Okay. What we'll really collect is, we'll collect one, two, three, we'll collect all of that and report it. But I think probably if I were choosing the most important piece of that to, to explain to the community, I'd like to be able to say sixty percent of our kids are in at least one course. And then forty percent are in two or more. But you're right, we, we will be collecting that data all the way through. Because if you only have ten percent of your kids taking all the AP courses, that's certainly a different picture. And you would see that in that data.
I, I was thinking of, some of you have heard me talk about a BHAG, a big hairy, audacious goal. Just wanted to make sure I said it right. And, you know, I was looking at this one quite a bit in terms of, you know, looking at a, at a big goal of how many AP, pre-AP, AP, and IB course hours we could, we could accumulate as a district in a year. So could we shoot for, you know, a hundred thousand hours of this, or whatever, just as a, as a, as a big, big goal that just everybody can get around? Because if, if we're doing this piece right here, if we're getting a lot of students in the pre-AP, AP, and IB courses, I think that's going to be a strong indication of that, that they're, they're doing really well, that they're engaged, that they're, that our teaching is effective, that they're performing. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of different metrics. This is one, I think, if we captured that one in terms of how many hours are we doing now? And just set a big hairy goal. I don't know, just a thought for, 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 for our consideration in terms of, something everybody can kind of wrap, wrap their arms around.
This is the piece about participation success in the college admissions exam. So this is the SAT, PSAT, AP, IB. This is the, the place where we want to look at results compared to the nation, not necessarily Texas. And we want to look at that data broken out or disaggregated by groups. We want to, at the PSAT, there are college readiness benchmarks in each of the subjects are the reading and math and the writing sections. So that'll give you a good perspective on, it's sort of a precursor of, are you really college-ready? And then the percent of students enrolled that are taking and earning scores at three, three, three or higher, which is generally the score you need to get credit.
Now, Elaine, the, the first two, the students taking SAT or ACT and the benchmark on the PSAT, that's data that we already collect, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I'm not sure you collect the college readiness level on the, I mean, I'm not sure you have reported that yet. I mean, your kids take the PSAT, and that data's there. But I'm not sure that the district's been reporting it that way.
Right, and, and that's, that's the, that's a part of some of these measures that we, we can have. We have the data, and every district can get it, or everyone gets it. Question is, is it part of their strategic plan to improve the district? And in this case, we're adding it because we're meeting that, or trying to meet that standard of college-ready in a premier school district, and we know that these are indicators to that. So while we have the data, now we're making the point of, of reporting it and then making those growth, setting those targets, basically.
Targets, right.
And I think that's a difference here that.
And this, this will be overall district data, but I know that we, we do obviously get that drilled down by campus and I believe subpop even, that type of thing. So you'll be able to improve, if, if we've got one campus that is making our district look good, we've got the other campuses to work on.
And not to jump too far ahead, but when we talk about the district and campus improvement plans, we'll make some connections as to how this will flow into the campus plan.
Okay. Good.
Is that limited to just the students' scoring? Are we also looking at the number of students taking the PSAT?
Yeah, the takings in there too. And when it, it says percent of students taking, and then the results compared to. Because the taking, you, I mean, kids need a college, I mean, a college entrance exam for most, most schools. Sometimes they don't need that. But the percent taking is a very critical piece in terms of.
I see that in that bottom point, the percent enrolled students taking AP test. So would that be inclusive of the PSAT? Because on the one, just for the PSAT, it says percent of students scoring.
Right.
So what I, you know, what I would hope that we're striving to is, you know, we want them all to score well, but we want more kids challenging themselves to take the test.
But the PSAT is given in the district.
Right, we administer it to the.
Not everybody.
Well, we, most of them take it. That's those in initiative, what, two years ago, Dr. Carter? And, and we make it where they're in school and they take it.
Who, who doesn't take the PSAT?
Say one more time.
Who doesn't take the PSAT?
Dr. Carter? Yeah, okay, specially maybe. So, but we will make it clear. We'll make it clear in there to make it that it's, it's both the taking, and we'll report that, and that's a good measure. And that's a good thing for everyone to know, is how many are taking, what percentage of the class is taking it.
Sure.
And we'll make it very clear.
But it's not mandatory to take it.
Right, that's, because I, I just received a telephone call for, even though my student is beyond the PSAT, it was from the principal saying, we encourage you, or we're encouraging parents to have their child take the PSAT. So that's why I was just trying to get an understanding, are they required to take it? Or is this, or is this a optional thing?
Yeah, isn't it normally held on a Saturday?
No, we moved it to during the week for that purpose, because the students are in school, and we can administer the test.
And it makes sense, because two years ago, three years ago would have been when my daughter took it, and it was on a Saturday, and it was not mandatory. It was optional, and given her having the choice, she didn't want to take it, but of course, mom made her take it.
And, and again, those are things we need to, you know, strengthen and, and have it administered in a requirement and things like that. It may be that it's not formalized enough in some schools, but that's what this is for.
And if that's a given measure, then that's good. If we're already at ninety-eight percent, then, you know, that's good.
That's right.
Why not report it that ninety-eight percent of our students take the PSAT? That's a great, that's a great metric, I think. So, yeah, I think we should recognize it, even if we're already doing it.
Sure.
I have one more question on the SAT, ACT data that we're comparing nationally. Is that the, the national average numbers typically that we'd be comparing against? And also, if that is the case, will we have the ability to look at what are deemed the highest-performing districts to compare against them as well?
Well, this really refers to comparisons to the nation on the, the scale. Right, the average. But, you know, it's always possible, if that was, you know, determined to be, you know, necessary, that we could get data from other districts. But that would just be a process of.
And I think that's part of our kind of benchmark or target conversation, that, okay, what do we, what do we want to get to?
Exactly.
Yeah, we're looking at, and this is good information, but what's our, what's our goal, what's our target, and so.
Okay.
Well, I think our target is going to be the college readiness benchmark score. Not just how many kids took it, but how many kids actually got that benchmark. Because PSAT is where national merit scholars come from. And this is a big deal for the kids to do well on it.
For sure.
It's coming up soon, this week, next week? All right, first week in October, I think.
October.
There's another, there's another metric, number of IB, you know, what do you call it?
Forward.
National Merit Scholars.
The next measure moves away from direct assessment of student performance and looks at tracking kids for being able to complete their high school requirements in four years. We're talking here of using a class cohort. So for the current ninth-grade class, we want to track them across their four years to see each year whether or not those students are, what proportion of those students are on track for graduation. And, you know, the state doesn't mandate how you classify students in terms of ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. What we're proposing here is that we combine the credit requirements the district has plus the measure of passing the appropriate EOCs to determine whether or not students are on track for graduation. So that a ninth grader who was taking Algebra I but did not pass the Algebra I EOC might still, according to district guidelines, be promoted to 10th grade. But because they haven't passed the EOC, that they're likely to have to, you know, get remediation or do whatever that could potentially throw them off track. So this is a way to be able to follow each class, each group cohort of students to see what proportion of them are staying on track, being successful.
These are staying on track, though, for core classes only, right?
Pardon?
These are staying on track only for core classes, correct?
Yeah, well, staying on track means you're, well, what we, the way we were defining this was whatever the current credit requirements are to go from ninth to 10th, we would combine that with an EOC check to see whether or not kids not only passed the courses they were required, but passed the exams that they were required to pass that were connected to those courses.
Okay, thank you.
And how do we measure the three-year students?
Yeah, I was going there too.
Yeah, I was going there too.
Well, if they're ahead, that's a plus. So they wouldn't be off track. And we would track them, you know, the class they started with. Yeah. Okay.
So our three-year students just don't fall through the crack as far as meeting that requirement?
That's correct. They're, they're part of the cohort. So whatever cohort they're in, that's, that's where they would, would be counted. And this is a, a more, a very important distinction that, that we felt and Elaine and in combination felt that was important to measure because you can pass your algebra class, you can pass your English class, but if you don't pass the STAR test, you're not really on track to graduate from high school. And it can be very, um, you know, you could have a false sense of, oh, these kids are making progress when they're really not, if they're not passing their STAR test. Or the other way around. You know, you can pass your STAR test but not pass your English or algebra and you're not on track to graduate. And we know that once you fall behind in terms of on track to graduate, uh, it makes it more difficult. And that's when you start recovering dropouts.
And just to be, be clear on this, uh, just simplifying it for my mind to understand it. So you've got a hundred students, the whole cohort, let's just say, and, uh, 10 of them, uh, don't pass the, the class. Um, and then another 10, let's just say, uh, do pass all their courses, uh, but failed the EOC or one of the EOC. So then the success rate would be 80%. Very clear. Okay. So they drop out if, if either they failed one class or they didn't pass one of the EOC, they fall. And so that counts against us in essence, in this metric. Okay.
Or they just disappear like happens.
Right. Or they're not in school. You know, the cohort, you're looking at the cohort class, but in this particular metric, it's about their performance on the, in the classroom and on the state assessments. Um, and again, you can, because STAR and, and has 12 exams that you must be successful at to graduate from high school, uh, in essence, um, it's very easy to accumulate your credits and not be on track to graduate. And if we don't report that or keep track of that or set high standards for that, uh, you could really get into a backlog of students who are not ready to graduate from high school, even though they have their juniors, for example. Uh, and we, we don't want that, number one, but we know that if you set these standards really high, uh, then, then that's where we go.
And your cohort tracking is able to, um, accommodate for students that leave, that drop out, that transfer from one school to another, uh, so that we're, how does, how does that get factored into the, to the percent?
Well, you know, really it's sort of like the same way the state does the high school completion rate because they track cohorts and kids can move in and out of the cohort. If they move into your district, they move into the cohort. If they leave for a legitimate reason and they're, they can, you know, leave the cohort without any penalty to the, to the group. But if they drop out, then that's, you know, they, that's a, a penalty to the, to the cohort and so forth. So it's that same kind of thing. Yeah.
So that would be counted as, if you add that one dropout to the 20 that I just mentioned, then our success rate would be 79%?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, and the other thing with the, with the cohort is, and this would be important as we publish some of this on our website, is to clearly define what makes up a cohort.
Right.
So that we have those questions. We don't have the questions. We put that information out that it, this student is no longer with our system, but they're in another system, then they're out of the cohort for us. If they dropped out, they're still in our cohort. I think those definitions have been, would be very helpful for the public to know.
And then in terms of actionable data, because this data can be beneficial for us to know whether we're on track to achieve our goals, but it can also be actionable data. Would it be, uh, of any benefit to separate that information? Well, a lot of the 17 or 21% that are not counted here, 10 didn't pass EOC, 10 didn't, and, and this many dropped out. And so that we have something that we can work with. Okay. Well, we know that we need to work better on the EOC or we need, you need to do better in making sure they pass their grades or we have a dropout issue.
Absolutely. And I think one of your first slides indicated that this is district data, but the expectation that I would have, and I think as a board you would have, is that all that data is disaggregated. And so as we get, again, to those campus improvement plan discussion here in a minute, uh, or more than a minute maybe, um, you, we're, we're going to make those connections to say that at the campus level, this will be disaggregated and they'll have their targets as well.
Yeah.
Are you, as far as defining cohorts, um, are you, uh, that seems to me that that's going to be a pretty big process trying to figure out, like in ninth grade, how many different cohorts?
Well, the district already establishes a cohort, a graduation, uh, group when students enter ninth grade. So that's already part of the student database system. Is that right?
That's correct. We're required to, uh, to establish a cohort and then the state is required to report our cohort, um, in terms of which students are still with us. And we have to keep track of that and we have to keep, basically keep track of all the cohorts.
Okay. And there's no, no chance of getting false numbers with like, say, the three-year kiddos that are, that, where they would, they would make that cohort look really good, even though it's not?
I, I, I think, and Dr. Carter's taking his head, and I think I know what he's saying because we've worked long enough together. But, um, it basically those, once you're counting that cohort, you stay in that cohort unless something happens. And so you're going to be part of a cohort. You, you can't not be part of a cohort, I guess. That's a better way of saying it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, number seven is real straightforward because this is the four-year high school completion rate. This is a, the type of data that's already in the, or has been in the state accountability system. So this is not new and, and we propose that this be an indicator in this system and that it, uh, be disaggregated like it is, uh, in the account, the past accountability system. So this is real straightforward, but the, the measure right before that is the one, so you could kind of track that class before you get to this measure. Okay.
How, how does, I, that, that's clean, obviously, for the state, but then we get into the federal, the whole AYP thing. Did, do we care about that? Are we looking at that? Is, I mean, I know we care about that.
Do we care about that?
Poor choice of words, but I didn't know if that's worked into these measures because that's always such a confusing thing for us, for the community. Uh, the federal's here, here's the state and then that kind of thing. So I didn't know if we addressed it.
Well, and, and of course, AYP uses the state assessment data. So what they're going to be using are the indicators that, the kinds of things that the state already has for everybody. So we should be, we should be okay. Now, the standards they set for AYP, of course, may be different than what's set in the state accountability system. And of course, in AYP, the eventual plan is 100% of the kids will meet the standard. So, you know, the likelihood of everybody getting there is not good. Well, okay. Measure eight is, uh, a measure we don't have yet and we won't have in the first year because this will be a measure from when the, actually this year's 10th graders, uh, will take these Algebra II and EOCs next year in their junior year. And so that'll be the first year we actually get, you know, a real cohort of kids taking these exams. And these two exams will have not just the satisfactory and the, whatever that next one is, advanced, uh, but they will have the college ready standard established. So that'll be, uh, a piece of data that will be important to look at since these are considered sort of, you know, gatekeeper kind of courses.
I have a, a question on the, the kids that are, I think, more anomalous and hopefully not into the future that, uh, are not in, uh, ninth grade, but they're in eighth grade or seventh grade taking algebra. Uh, how, are they going to be part of that cohort as an example? Or have you talked about that at all yet?
Yeah, because, well, the algebra, if they take Algebra I in, in eighth grade and then geometry in ninth grade, then they're going to be in Algebra II in 10th grade, not in the 11th grade year. So what we'll likely be doing is reporting all kids that are in that course in that year that are taking. So those 10th graders would be in there plus kids in 11th grade taking that algebra exam.
Okay.
Okay.
And I guess the point is, as long as you report it consistently, then you can see the growth or not.
Right, right.
And compare.
Okay.
Okay. Measure nine, this also is a, a measure that's been in AEIS. So this is not a new measure. That's percent of graduates earning the advanced or, uh, higher graduation plan. So that's not a new, not a new piece, but an important piece because students, um, need that rigor that is represented by the advanced degree plan.
And, and is that based on the, the, uh, selection of courses throughout their high school?
That's correct. The, the type of courses that they take. Absolutely.
And if kids graduate under this advanced degree, they have to earn a higher EOC scores on their.
On their STAR, EOC.
Measure 10 is, um, talks about career and technology, uh, completion of the six-year plan. So, um, you know, there's going to be a course developed in eighth grade, uh, that will be in place this year. No, next year. Sorry, next year. It's being developed this year. It'll be in place next year. And in that course, students will begin, um, as part of this measure, uh, starting to develop their six-year plan. And we will report, um, this in year two. So the percent of kids that have a six-year plan. And I know that the intent is to follow that like a cohort through to make sure that kids then are still on their plan or have wavered from their plan. So to be able to track kids. I think that's the Navient system that allows them to do that. The other measure here is percent of students enrolled in one or more, or multiple courses, CTE courses, those that are in no courses, one course, two, and so forth, to get to the, to the piece of the, the strong career and technology preparation.
Can you explain the, the six-year plan, starting in eighth grade?
So it's eighth grade, the four years of high school and the first year post-secondary. I'm sorry, I didn't go there.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we don't want them to have the high school.
That's what I was wondering. I was like, wait a minute, there's only five years there. Okay. Okay.
Uh, isn't, isn't every student actually required to establish a, uh, their six-year plan when they get to eighth grade? Because they, they take the, the CTHE class and part of that class is.
Yes.
Uh, establishing through the career cruising system, the six-year plan.
Right. But it, two, a couple of things with that. Not every student takes that class, number one, right now. And then they establish it, but they don't revise it or keep up with it on, on a, on a continuous basis. So that's the difference here is that it, it's, it would be an established requirement for every student in the eighth grade. And you reformat the class because that's, that's a component of the class.
Mm-hmm.
But doesn't necessarily tie to the content of the class. And that's the big difference here is that you can create a plan without much knowledge of your, of your career, if you, if you will. So what, but the thought here is to redesign or create another eighth grade class that is specifically focused on career ready and career plans. So that it has meaning, what you're creating. You're not just typing your plan.
Yeah. So this is driving up an operational change then. Uh, and then would this also drive, uh, an operational change for the counselors in terms of, okay, this isn't just kind of like our strategic plan. It can be sitting.
That's correct.
And it's self-collecting dust or this is a living, breathing document. And every time I'm meeting with a student, I'm talking to them about, so is that what, what do you have in mind?
Absolutely. And that.
We're going to take this off the shelf and it's not just something you created back then. It's, we're using it to guide you all the way through.
Absolutely. And you're going to have that advocate for every student that we talked about in our strategic plan, where this is the focus of it. It's, it's, you know, this is the center of focus of it, is to make sure that it's revised and continually, uh, you know, inputted, I guess, and, and revised. But again, what we have now is some students do it as part of a class, but that's not the focus of the class. And that's what we're redesigning.
And is this the, is this the definition of those three paths they can take for their graduation level? Like recommended is one of them? What's the lower one?
Minimum, recommended and distinguished. But no, this, this is tied more to their career of choice. And so there are career pathways that exist, um, through the workforce commission and others that have established career pathways. That's what we would align it to. So it's basically what career you want to pursue.
Okay. Got it. I'm thinking how you said the workforce. I, I found out in a meeting that I was at, the workforce is really critical in this piece because that, not only will it help them in this path, it also affords them opportunities where they'll give them money to go to college.
And if you think about future discussions with the Chamber of Commerce or other grants that we're pursuing and things like that, you have a real good handle of the types of careers that students are pursuing, you know, at the eighth grade level that they're interested in. So that we're not just assuming that students want to be XYZ in terms of careers. We have actual data that supports that. So that we're purposeful in our grant applications and our discussions with the chamber or the business community and internships and things like that. This sets that, that foundation that we need in terms of data to drive it forward.
I have one question. Are we, uh, that, I think this is a little off task as far as getting away from measures, but regarding the CTHE, uh, are we marketing it to students before they hit that eighth grade year, seventh grade, sixth grade, to get them excited about it, thinking about it, knowing that this is going to be coming for eighth grade, that kind of thing?
We haven't, uh, at this point, because we're at, at the, this year, we're redesigning the class. Now, as we get into spring semester, when we do pre-registration, I think that'll be a big emphasis. Um, but right now, we're still looking at the redesign of that class and also working with our staffing. And I mean, it's, it's a, it's more of a complex mix with our staffing at our junior high levels and the types of elective students can have access to and things like that. That's the work that's being done now.
When I look at the, um, the percent of students enrolled in one, two, or three CTHE courses, I'm trying to think of what are going to be those unique HE courses because every, you know, with the four by four, uh, everyone's taking math and science and those types of things. So would that, um, blur that or would the number of kids that are, um, en- enrolled in, uh, core classes, um, uh, make that percentage, uh, look a lot higher? Should we disaggregate, I guess, uh, CT versus HE in, in that manner?
I, I think that, that would be powerful to, to have the career technical courses and show the growth or the goal that you want to have in terms of, back to the hours of AP and pre-AP, the hours or something similar to career technical classes may be powerful. And that may be.
Especially since we have so many metrics for high red.
That's correct.
And not as many specifically for career technical.
Yeah, I think there's great value in that because even, even disaggregated out, obviously those HE students, that's going to be a false positive because it's four by four. Everybody's going to have it.
We're fine limiting to that, CT.
We're looking at, uh, on measure 11, at a survey of graduates to assess their perceptions of their preparation for post, that they receive during their high, well, not during their high school, but during their, uh, pre-secondary year, I guess, years. And then, uh, looking at career path information, military information, higher ed information. We know that all kids don't enroll in college and, uh, the next measure kind of looks at that piece of it. So we wanted to have a way to look at, um, data that we could gather directly from graduates to assess those that are in the workforce already to see if they are in the career path that they expected to be. And to ask them to, all kids, but ask for their, um, you know, how they perceive their preparation. And, um, look at that from the perspective of like this class of 2012 that just graduated, but also to look at a graduate survey for the class of 13 before they graduate. And then have a way to sort of look at kids' plans against their reality. Uh, because if you work off their plans, you may be surprised to see how many students do or don't follow through on those plans. But we think this, the way to get to this data would be through a survey of graduates. Okay. Measure 12 is looking at college enrollment and college graduation. Um, the National Student Clearing House is a nationwide endeavor that collects data from colleges and from high schools and is able to pull that data together to give you a report back from all of your graduating classes in terms of whether the students are enrolled. to give you a report back from all of your graduating classes, in terms of whether the students are enrolled in a two- or four-year institution, in Texas or anywhere else in the US, public or private. It covers about, I think it's ninety-six percent of the degree-granting institutions. And then, so it, it measures each cohort of graduates every year, so you can follow those, to see how they are progressing in terms of enrollment. And it also looks at, uh, whether those students obtain a two- or four-year degree. And they report those degrees as they're earned, as the cohort's progressing through. But their sort of, uh, final snapshot is a, at six years after high school graduation. That's when the majority of kids that are going to finish, do finish. And so that's where you can look at how many Arlington ISD kids are graduating from a two- or four-year, getting a two- or four-year degree. So that's very powerful data, that data also can be disaggregated. And from that data, you can tell where the kids go, you actually get a data file back with information on the kids. So it's very, there's a lot of data there. These are the pieces we're gonna look at, but there's a lot of other data that can help, uh, the leadership team make decisions about, um, you know, what happened, or to investigate issues about what happens to kids after they leave here.
Is there any way we can collect some data that reflects how many of our kids, although they pass the tax, and their math classes still are not ready for college math?
In terms, so needing remediation?
Because the colleges in the area require that they take a math test. Because they say our students are not ready.
Right. I, I, um, in terms of remediation, we get a report from a higher ed coordinating board. Right, Wally, it's higher ed coordi- let me tell the rest of it, that tells what proportion of kids needed remediation. The problem, that's right, Riley, right, Wally. And the issue is that data comes to you like several years past, I mean, after that class graduated. So it's not like you know that, uh, on kids that just graduated from the class of twelve. I'm not sure whether or not the National Student Clearinghouse data includes whether or not they took courses that were remedial or not. I'm not sure. That data may be in there, I kind of doubt, I haven't read that it is in there.
But if they're having to take the test, how many of them are failing it? That they have to, that will tell us at least that portion. And if, even if it is years out, if it's showing a trend, then we know there's an issue that we have not resolved.
And another way to access that data, you know, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of the strategic plans talk about work with partnerships, university partnerships. And we know, from looking at Arlington, I mean, we know where the Arlington kids are going, or a lot of them. So we can work with the institutions to find that data for our graduates. And I, I don't think that would be hard to find for, for the majority of kids that are going locally, anyway.
And use that as a, uh, kind of a, uh, a sample, basically? Kind of a statistical, statistical sampling of, okay, of all the kids that went to all these schools, this percentage had to take the, or failed the, the test, and they had to take remediation courses. I got a couple of questions about this, and before we go to number thirteen, can we go back to eleven after we're done with twelve? Because I caught that I had a question on there, and, and I, I missed it earlier, so, uh, but after we're done with twelve. In that, i- i- in the information we get from the National Student Clearinghouse data, do we get, uh, the year that they graduated, so that we can kind of recohort them? Uh, you know, put them back in the cohort and say, okay, of our graduating class of nineteen, or two thousand fifteen?
They report by cohort.
Okay, they do report still by cohort.
The class of twelve, the class of thirteen, the class of two thousand seven, the class of two thousand eight. That's why we're proposing that we give them data all the way back to our graduating class of two thousand seven, so that, because those kids have been out more than six years, or will have been by the time we're reporting. And we can go back and look at what the history is. That'll just give us some of the longitudinal data, so we can be able to see where we've been, and help judge performance in the future.
Yeah, okay, and then I would just strongly support Ms. Pena's recommendation that we track the number of students, not just in math, but any remediation courses they're having to take. Uh, because that, we did hear that from Tarrant County College, we've heard that from UTA, uh, that a large percentage of our students are requiring that.
I think those numbers are readily available from Tarrant County College, that they know.
And UTA probably.
They know which high schools the kids went to, and which ones need remediation, and I think we can get those numbers pretty easily.
We can, the, the only issue with that is that the, it depends who decides to go to TCC and UTA. We can use them as snapshots, I think that, that might help. But for example, all the kids taking dual-credit classes now, they've taken the exams and passed, and so they're, they're not taking remediation classes. So we, we would have to, back to the establishing the measure and the metric, and how we're gonna define a cohort, or define college-ready, and define which campuses we're gonna compare to. Once we establish that, then sure, we can collect the data and sample it, absolutely. I think it's a good idea, and it gives us another picture.
Yeah.
I did want to mention, one thing that the National Student Clearinghouse doesn't provide is any information on technical certificates. So, you know, the colleges that provide this kind of technical certifications, now, some two-year schools do that, but they're not reporting those kind of certifications. So, um, you know, it's possible that, uh, you know, well, let's just say it this way. Hopefully TEA and Higher Ed Coordinating Board would see the need to provide that data to districts. So if there's a possibility that we could get that kind of data, it would help us look at the workforce, I mean, the preparation for the, their career path, if it's not post-secondary, higher ed. So that, I think that data, having that would, you know, uh, give us a stronger picture of the graduates.
Elaine, would that be something we need to push through the legislative session to get release of that data?
I think that, that would be, any push from any arenas would be good. I know that Spring Branch is very interested in that kind of data, and plan to try to work with the commissioner, to, Higher Ed Commissioner, to, uh, see, because they collect, th- those places have to provide that data to higher ed, I mean, coordinating board. So we think, or we know the data's there, it's just getting it back and getting it reported to districts.
That probably should be added to.
Yeah.
Our legislative agenda, as we start moving forward on that. Thank you.
Good catch.
Want to go back to eleven, just?
Okay. Uh, on this one, uh, my comment was, um, just open it up again. In terms of, this is to measure whether we, uh, or how well we prepared students for a career, right?
Or whatever path they're taking, either career or, um, post-secondary, higher ed. So this is sort of a preparation, but also to find kids that aren't in the, wouldn't be in the National Student Clearinghouse information. Kids that go in the military, or who are already working, not just working part-time while they go to college, but that are working full-time, kind of.
Yeah, that, that's the, kind of the way I read it. This is, we're trying to measure how our students that didn't go to higher ed, how, how well they were prepared to do whatever they wanted to do. Whether right into a job, or whether into the military, or that kind of thing. Does, uh, and let me start with what I think may be easier to get. Does military give us any information as to how prepared they thought our students were?
That's interesting. I, I've actually talked to military recruiters, and, um, they might be willing to talk to you about the students from Arlington that they've encountered in general terms, but otherwise, there will be no data from the military. I mean, they just said, no. No, we don't do that, and, you know, so. So we felt like the best way to even, you know, find what percent of kids are going in the military might be through the postgraduate survey, or the graduate survey.
I guess the, the other, the other one that I had, uh, in the terms of the private sector. We have some very large employers here in, uh, Arlington, Tarrant County, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't partner up with them and, and figure out, okay, how do you determine whether somebody is, is ready when they come to you? When they go work at GM, or at Lockheed Martin, or any of these employers? Is there something, is there something that they're looking at to determine whether, okay, this is a high-quality potential employee or not? And just partner with them, and, and trying to come up with a metric, a measurement to, how well are we preparing these students to come into the workforce? And that can certainly be something that we could, uh, partner with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce to engage businesses, large employers, to, to help us determine a, a real effective metric. I think a survey is okay, I mean, if that's the most we can do. But if, if, if we're getting some hard data from employers, hey, you know, we had five thousand applicants from Arlington ISD, and out of them, you know, half of them really weren't prepared for, for the workforce, or something like that.
Yeah, I, I think that, that goes back to like the TCC and UTA, kind of give us our own local, um, flavor, if you will, about how our students are doing locally. And we could certainly assemble a group with Wes's help, and, uh, and survey them, uh, about our kids that are, uh, seeking employment with them, or actually working with them. I think that's, it's good to add that local.
Yeah, and I think that's right in line with what we're trying to provide for the community. You know, students that either go to higher ed, or are prepared to become, uh, uh, good citizens in our community, so, okay.
And, and you know, even though you might not be able to quantify that data in a way that would be easily reportable, that's the kind of data that a little leadership team can take and use to improve programs as a part of the writing and building and implementing this, the, the action plans, their, their strategic plans. So even though it may not yield as much quantification as you'd like, it could give you very rich data to help program development.
And, and one last point, I just thought of that, if, if, if nothing else, then simply a survey of the local employers as well. Yeah, ask the students how they think they're ready, how, how ready they think they are. But then ask the employers that are hiring them how well they, they were prepared, they thought they were prepared.
And, and this, this in particular is, is kind of the capstone to, as you'll see in a minute, I think, where we're surveying students as they're going through our school system. And this is that, once they exit, one more survey about their school preparation. So it, it, it's good in combination with other things.
Thank you. Thanks for going back.
A question related to this, how, uh, what kind of mechanisms are we going to have to put into place to, to keep track of these students a year out, or a year and a half out, as far as just contact information?
We have a, a whole discussion or process that we're going through in terms of surveys, because you'll start seeing that a lot of these things are gonna be surveyed, so Dr. Carter and Elaine are working closely with. What surveys are out there, what are the robust surveys that they keep track of the kids through email, or phone numbers, or addresses, and things like that? Basically, an external, uh, survey mechanism for, for these, uh, students that companies do, and that's part of their payment, is that they keep track of the students in a variety of different ways. So that's the review process that's going on right now, because we certainly can't be trying to survey students locally and, and not having a huge database to try to keep track of them.
Right.
So we're looking at surveys, that's one of them. That we're gonna look at different, basically, companies, if you will, that do this work, to see which is the best one, and use best practice in other places that have already, you know, done some of this work.
Okay, yeah, then the reason I'm asking, besides the, the legwork involved, is that this is, uh, I don't, I don't have anything to, to, uh, any data to support this, but I would think that students, uh, that have graduated and moved on, that are not doing well, are the ones most likely not to be reporting back to us. And so we might get false success ideas, ideas, when that's not actually reflective of our situation.
And you know, when you get, for example, you get a graduate survey responses, and, you know, you collect some demographics with that data that you're getting from the student, you can also compare that to the demographics of the graduating class to see if you're getting, you know, a representation of that class or not. So that's another kind of way to double-check data.
Mr. President. Our speaker has been here for almost an hour and a half, standing up. We're through, or starting goal thirteen. First, I'd like to ask, are you doing okay?
I'm fine.
Okay, yeah, secondly, if we continue, I, 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 I want us to, I, I mean, um, I'm just gonna ask the board, this is probably, we're probably looking at three hours here. Is this something that we try to accomplish all in one night, going through these matrix?
Well, I think after the first couple, we're going a little quicker, we can certainly take a short break here.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm trying to look out for our, our speaker, as well as making sure that we're going to be, um,
You have to be on camera, Spence.
As informed as possible. I, I, because we, we are asking very good questions, I'm just not seeing that we're moving the process along.
We are, we, let's take a five-minute break. And we'll be back in five minutes.
Okay, number thirteen deals with, um, a measure of student engagement in schools. And, um, this particular engagement is looking at their connection to the school through co-in extracurricular activities. And so in this first year, what we will do is look at participation through coursework, that we can get through the student database. So if they're in athletics, or if they're in, um, drill team, or anything that is, is co-in extracurricular, we can collect that data through fine arts, um, you know, through the, throughout the curriculum, in the area of, um, well, all areas that we can look at. So what we will do is, we'll make a, we'll have a definition that says, for these, that we know that these particular courses are connected to co-in extracurricular activities of students, that by participating in this course, they're in these other activities. And that'll give us a gauge in the first year of, of, of that piece. The second piece is collecting information about all the other types of student engagement through leadership organizations and clubs, and even, um, community organi- community-sponsored organizations, because our understanding that, that we wanted to have those pieces included also. And that second piece is a, a bigger endeavor, and it requires collection of information almost from individual students, or through school sponsors of, of school, clubs, and activities. So we know that's gonna take a while to plan how that data will be collected and reported. So we propose that that piece be collected in the second year and reported then. Measure fourteen moves into the area of, um, looking at instructional practices related to the instructional model. You know, there's, the curriculum audit will, the outcome of that will be a new instructional model for the district. And we're looking at surveying students and teachers, uh, regarding that instructional practice. And so we, um, we would, there are several types of surveys that exist that, and I gave an example of one, it's called tripod survey, but it's basically, um, a survey of teachers and students that measures aspects of instructional engagement in the classroom. And so it gives us a way to, to measure that in a very precise kind of way. And we hope that we would be able to do that measurement in year two, after the new instructional practice is put in place. Will give us time to put that instructional practice, new practices in place, and then find an instrument that's most appropriate to measure that sort of, uh, instructional engagement.
You're looking for questions. This, uh, this is electronic, most likely, right?
I think it's a, it could be, it could be, or, or paper. I mean, I, it's based on the tripod organization, and how they deliver it. But this would be one of those, uh, surveys that we would contract out, external. Both externally developed, externally normed, and then administered as well, uh, in our system. And tripod is, uh, is, is an example, we use it as an example, because we've had a lot of conversation of the type of survey that would get us the information that we're seeking in this particular, uh, measure. And, uh, it's one that we became familiar with, uh, when we went to our, um, train. And it's one that we became familiar with when we went to our training at Harvard Institute, and Elaine's familiar with it too. It's one example. It's one on the list of surveys that Dr. Carter is going to review with Elaine to meet our standards.
I think Dr. Carter's going to be pretty busy.
He is.
We're hearing his name a lot tonight.
He should be sitting on this stool.
Elaine, you're welcome to sit.
I know, I know. But then I won't be tall enough. The next measure looks at sort of the softer side of some of the outcomes that we're looking at in terms of lifelong learning, community service, leadership. And here we're talking, we're talking students. And what we'd like to do is either develop or have a survey developed that could combine these pieces and collect that information from students and be able to report that out in the first year. And this is, I mean, the community service participation and the leadership pieces will be, you know, more straightforward. But the lifelong learning is an attribute that, you know, will have to be measured in carefully worded items. But we think we can handle that via survey work.
And this is, one of the things that we asked how, when we did the community presentations, about how we could measure whether someone had achieved lifelong learning or was, I don't know how we would say it, if it's an achievement or how to determine if somebody was becoming a lifelong learner was reading, right, instilling in the students a love of reading. And so I thought that a metric for that, if we believe that that would be an accurate representation of our goal, is to just measure the number of books that we're reading. Number of books per dis, for the whole district, or number of books per student, or number of books per campus, anything like that, that we might say, okay, well, look, our students, you know, out of 68,000 students, we were reading three students per year, three books per year per student, something like that. I don't know that, if we think that reading books is an indicator of being a lifelong learner, then that may be one, something that we could measure. And it's easy to measure because they already do it, at least at the elementary level, for sure. I mean, all the kids have lists of the books that they're, and they get awards, they get a pizza coupon or whatever, tickets to Six Flags if they, if they read. And at least at the elementary level, you know, because if we get them reading at the elementary level, more than likely, they'll be reading at the junior high and at the high school level. So just a suggestion for a metric there.
Yep, and I think that, you know, you could look at even those certain grade levels in the elementary that we know are very important, where somebody's read to a student and things like that. So we can look at that. I think that that adds some, a little bit more tangible to this one. And I think we need a little more, something a little bit more tangible.
Measure 16 is focused on student discipline. And it's part of the safe and secure environment piece. And here, the measure's pretty straightforward. It's percent of students involved in one or more discipline offenses. But just like that data we talked about, about students enrolled in one or more rigorous courses, this data too would be collected so that you could see, you know, what percent of students are involved in, you know, one, two or more, three or more, that kind of thing. But, and of course, hopefully, you would want to see this number decrease. We're also looking at the percent of students involved in one or more serious offenses. So kind of two pieces of that.
What about with this particular one? It's important to see what the trends are. But in my view, student discipline would be more of a deterrent type of measurements that we're doing. I mean, I, ways that we're actually looking at, you know, trying to turn the tide on the disciplinary issues and, you know. So when I'm looking at the strategic plan, I'm not looking at the, necessarily just trying to get feedback, okay, we have fewer students involved in major discipline offenses or even serious offenses. A greater measurement to me would be is that we implemented this program to deter these offenses from happening. And I think that would be a greater measurement.
That is what we'll be reporting in the updates on the action plans. Because that, that's an activity that the district will do, implement a program to address that particular need. And that kind of feedback and reporting will come to you via those updates every four months on what has been implemented. So that's how you'll get that piece.
So similar to the CTE where the metric is changing, causing some operational change in terms of, okay, well, if we're going to improve that number, then that means that we have to do what you're talking about, I guess. You know, we got to put this program in place. We're going to take some proactive measures to make sure that looks better. Is that what you're saying? Is that, that was the plan?
Yeah, and you know, you think about this data, I mean, this data really serves multiple purposes. I mean, it tells you where you are and, and then if you have targets set, how close you are to your target. But it also tells you if you're not moving fast enough or if you're not making any movement or progressing, then it tells you that whatever it is you're doing to address this is probably not working and you need to change your strategy. So it gives you not only sort of what kind of progress you're making, but it gives you feedback on, you know, does this not work? Or is part of this working, not all of it working? And in a conversation that we had on break, we talked about, you know, looking at all of this data. But the data that we're looking at here, these 28 measures, behind all these 28 measures, when staff, when we all worked together, we had 228 measures. And so these have been distilled down to get to that kind of top-level measure. But there's all that data that represents the efforts that take to get here, that leading indicator kind of data that we get. For example, on discipline, on this particular one, we're not going to wait till the end of the year and just see what this data looks like. Principals, administrative leadership, they have those discipline reports on an ongoing basis. They need to be looking at that data to tell them whether, what is going on in their campus and whether, whatever implementation of programs or practices is having an impact in their particular situation. So you don't, you're not relying just on this one measure. There are measures that are behind, secondary measures, if you will, that underlie all of this, these measures, to help staff be tracking this information all the way along.
Is this information, the disciplinary things in teams, is that recorded K-12? Or is it just high school? Because I know I'm used to seeing things that are typically just high school. And I'm asking because as far as programs, one of the things that pops to my mind is, you know, a conflict resolution type of program? That would be for kindergarten, probably first or third grade at that young age. But I didn't know if we collect the other side, this data for that age group or that grade level?
I'm presuming, Stephen, do you?
Yeah, it's throughout the system.
It is?
Yes. Discipline is recorded in teams throughout the system.
Okay, so we could, we could take a program like that, a conflict resolution program, and track how long it's been in play and immediately look and have comparative data from the hits before historically versus current.
Right, and you could, you could implement programs by level? Junior high program and see the effect, if you will?
Right, and this is, data would clearly be disaggregated by level because, and even by grade level, because you'll see very clear different trends in different grade levels. So this is another level of disaggregation you'd be interested in looking at.
On this one, I want to throw something out there. I don't know if it belongs in this, but I don't want to lose it and I'll forget it. And so if I say it here, then somebody will write it down, I'm thinking. A thought would be, in terms of perception of safety in the schools, that's a, that's a big, important key for our community. And so in terms of tracking the number of offenses, of offenses to our student population, and then maybe comparing that to the city crime data as it relates to the city population and trending that and demonstrating where we, where we are, I mean, if we're at the worst, should be trending the city. So whatever the crime rate per population is in the city, you would think we're somewhere hopefully below that. But if we can, as we trend it, demonstrate that we're becoming safer than the city and we're telling parents, your kids are safer coming to school than they are either at home, walking the streets, or anywhere else. I think that could be pretty impactful in terms of the effect to the community of what we can demonstrate. Again, the value that the schools bring, not only are we educating your students, we're getting ready for work, we're also keeping them very safe. And we can demonstrate that because we only have 10 incidents per 100,000 students or whatever. And that's, we can compare that almost apples to apples to what the city reports. So just a thought.
Well, I think that's really good. And perception is the important part of this. Because today, earlier today, I was at a Rotary meeting and Dr. Cavassos was there as my guest. And a question was asked was, what about that shooting in front of one of the schools? And he quickly replied, that was Mansfield ISD, not Arlington ISD. But because it was in the city of Arlington, the perception was that it was our schools that it happened. And so there was not, and the media reported it as in Arlington and implied that it was AISD. So that's a perception problem. And that's, that will be more difficult to deflect. And, but your comparison might help us. But how, we need to make sure we're really aggressive in presenting that information.
State of the district address showing this trend, this is, this is how safe we are. We don't just say we're safe, we can demonstrate how safe we are, so.
And speaking of perceptions, you'll see another related to student perceptions about safe and secure a little bit later in this, in the measures. Measure 17 is looking at facilities. And here, there is first a, looking at the perceptions of students and staff and parents on the functionality and other characteristics of their facilities, including technology, use of space, crowded, loneliness. These are just examples of the kinds of things you'd want to look at. And so that's one piece, looking at the perception of your stakeholders about their facilities. And then the second piece is looking at what percentages of, what percent of campuses are meeting the facility's standards. And that would come not in this first year, but in the second year after, as part of the strategic plan, those standards are established and then our schools are assessed against those standards. And so you could look at sort of where we are against a set of standards in that second year. Then you measure that annually to see how that's being improved. And same, same thing with perceptions about facilities. At, you know, if we want to have world-class facilities and we're making improvements, you know, are those reflected in the views of parents and students, teachers, staff?
Is this the only metric or measurement that we have related to world-class facilities? I don't remember seeing another one before or after this.
This is pretty much it at this point, yes. And I know, you know, we had that question about technology earlier too, so.
Yeah, and frankly, I see technology separate from just the facility aspect. Technology is much more comprehensive in my mind. Obviously, it is part of the facilities, but it's more than that. This is the only one, I, you know, part of the whole thinking about, behind this one was, again, benefit to the community as well. And so the perception of the students, staff, parents, critical. But I think the perception of some of our stakeholders is just as critical. Are, do you think our facilities are world-class? And I'm thinking the people that are out promoting our community, the realtors, you know, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, those stakeholders that are bringing people in to look at our community. And are they saying, hey, we're not embarrassed to bring them by a school or we don't take two roads out to, so that they don't see the particular facility? But no, we go out of our way to showcase your facilities. And then again, another metric that we could use is how often are people from outside the district wanting to use our facilities? Whether it's community-based organizations or organizations from outside even our community. So are people coming in and saying, we want to, we want to do a soccer tournament in your facilities? We want to do a swim meet in your new swimming pool? Do, we want to do, you know, whatever it is that we have, volleyball tournaments because your facilities are so great, we want to come out there. And so that could be an actual, something we can measure. And we probably already have a baseline. How much are they using it now? How often do we rent them out? So just, since this is the only time we're measuring this, I'd like to beef that up a little bit because we're going to be, if we do what we say we're going to do, we're going to spend a lot of money on this. And we need to be able to demonstrate that we're getting really good return on our investment with this. So definitely one to consider more and beef up, I would think, would be this one.
Yeah, the use of facilities by outside groups is one of the measures that we talked about in our, our group meeting. And so it's one piece that, you know, staff will be looking at anyway. But, you know, adding it as a measure would certainly not be a difficult thing to do.
My question, and, Tony, I don't see where you're going with this, I really do. But my question would be, our facilities are probably not up to the point where they, they should be right now in many of those areas. When we're talking athletics, performing arts, those type of things. I'm wondering if, if our focus on world-class facilities right now really mimic the direction that the board takes in building of new bond project items when we go out for the next bond, when we talk about new, two new schools and building those things as world-class facilities? Because what we're talking about otherwise, we're talking about long-range projects. I mean, really long-range projects. So I think that if we looked at things that were just related to, say, with athletics right now, with the rentals of, you know, baseball complexes or football stadiums or things, we're going to find out that we have very little. Just because we don't have a lot. I mean, we just don't, we don't have anything in comparison. So I think that, at least from my standpoint, is, are the facilities, the additions, the things that we're putting into place now with the new schools, the new additions to schools, those type of things, are we bringing that world-class benefit to the district? And so, you know, I, I think that we need to have a very broad view of this. And, you know, then we have our operational tactics that we, that we, you know, move along with when we're talking about bringing different pieces. But until we can get a full needs assessment of the district, I, you know, I think that's working towards the goal of getting world-class facilities.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't think you're saying anything different than what I'm saying. It's, I'm saying, I'm just saying, when we do a survey, we need to include more than just the parents and the students and the staff. We need to include stakeholders. And in terms of, you know, how often people from outside the district are using our facilities, we just need to have a baseline, basically.
I think our baseline right now will say, not very much.
That's fine. That's fine.
Mr. Hibbs, I would say, I think that's a good perception to understand, to see exactly what is critical of what we're getting. Because then when that facilities report comes back in our needs, we know, what are parents really, what are our stakeholders, everyone really looking at is what they need and what they're looking for?
And I grant you, I think, I'm not disagreeing with that. What I'm saying is, that it needs, I don't want the perception to be that it's, you know, the only thing that we're looking at is, when we're talking about world-class facilities, are athletic fields. Because what I deem important, you know, and this is just one board member talking, I want our world-class facilities, first and foremost, to be in the classroom. Because that's where our kids are learning, you know? And then, as we bring other, as we bring the other components of, you know, athletics or fine arts, those type of things into the picture. I don't want us to get bogged down in just looking and saying, okay, we're looking at just this one avenue of how we bring our facilities up, you know, for fine arts or for athletics. I want to make sure that we're looking at the classroom.
Mr. Hibbs, it sounds like that's kind of a discussion of the standards that we want to see set. And I think that that may be part of the discussion when we get to the facilities planning and this facilities audit. But I agree with you, and, because I'd like to certainly see end of reliance on temporary buildings for long-term use of classrooms, for example. So, wouldn't that be part of the, when we get to the standards discussion?
Yeah, I think so. Yes?
If I could interject, the, this one was interesting when we discussed it. And Bob sat through most of the others, and then this was his, really, in terms of a lot of input. But if you look at, under Report, the second bullet, or square, if you will, that's really, it seems kind of simple, but it's, that's the big heart of this. Which is, once you do that facility assessment of your technology, of your classroom space, of your labs, of your career and technical space, of, for programs in career tech, once you do that entire facility assessment, then it's the task to set those standards. And say, what do we want our instructional design to look like for our classrooms? And you're right, Mr. Hibbs, it's about, once we set those standards, that the first place you can implement them is when you're building something new. But we also know that when you renovate, or expand certain facilities, or add to facilities, then that's where you apply those standards as well. So the metric there is really, are you even making any movement to the standards that you're setting to be world-class? But your first opportunity, as you mentioned, would be when you build those new schools, or those building additions. But that facility assessment, that second part, is really, there's a lot there because we're looking at career technical space, which we know we need, instructional space designed based on our instructional model, collaborative spaces, and things like that. And once you set all those standards, then the metrics are, how far are you getting to them? And does that yield now a bond issue, or things like that? And I think that's the power in there. But you're right about the first opportunity is when you start building.
I wish I'd have said that, because that's what the second bullet means. So we would, in his example about, you know, so career and tech facilities, so we would want to break out the standards and see where we are on all of the standards. And that's really what we're looking at there, and that is a very powerful piece.
And I think you're right, because as we talked about setting those standards, we talked about involving the community to recognize those standards. And so, the community is saying, this is what we believe is world-class, and we're meeting, fifty percent of our facilities are meeting it, and sixty the next year, then we're trending that way. So, yeah, I think that's, I think that's a good point.
Next measure looks at the learning and achievement, the managed performance empowerment. This piece is, we're measuring that piece by looking at the kinds of autonomy that are being granted to campuses. So here, basically, we're just, we're just counting and looking at the kinds of autonomy that are granted through that process.
And the, because this is an important one, the MPE, because we've had a lot of discussion. The background to all this is, what are those performance targets to yield that autonomy for campuses? And so all that is, needs to be developed, and then you start seeing the autonomy being granted to campuses. But the background work is, what are those targets with specific measures?
There's a lot to that little line.
There is. The shorter they get, the more work it is, so.
Yeah, there's a lot under that line.
Measure nineteen, and I kind of wish this one had been up a little bit earlier because it's basically the, looking at student perceptions of a safe and secure, respectful environment. And, you know, we can, you know, we have perceptions of the community about what, you know, safety is in the schools. But, you know, the kids are the ones that live in it and can tell us their perceptions of how safe their school is. And then, the kinds of things, the sort of the nuances within safe are, is it, they're not afraid of violence, but they're afraid of somebody taking their telephone, or their cellphone, or something, you know? So that should yield us some good information.
I had a quick, I think, first of all, love that you've worded that, safe, secure, and respectful environment. I think it's so powerful, and I think it's great, the survey of students. But what about the survey of teachers, the same thing? Are we capturing that somewhere else?
That's somewhere else. All right, we're at twenty. Twenty looks at, it's pretty straightforward, just kind of hard data. We'll use the HR data on staff retention, and we'll look at employees by position. So we'll have teachers as one group, and, you know, custodial, just breakouts of transportation staff, that kind of thing. So that we can look at where there might be issues, and where there are strengths in terms of retention. And then, of course, the strategic plans would work to formulate the strategies that would help solve any issues that are identified.
Just to clarify, we already track the reasons that employees leave and that type of thing. So we'll have an immediate baseline measure to measure against going forward in each of these groups, right? Yeah, okay.
Here, we weren't really focusing on the reason they leave.
Right.
We're focusing on how many left.
Right, right.
Because, you know, the TEA through AEIS system has been reporting teacher turnover rates. And it is important to know why they leave, because a part of that teacher turnover is retirements, and, you know, that kind of thing. Well, you know, you're not going to keep people from retiring when it's time for retirement. But, you know, you do need, sort of that background, that secondary data that HR people are looking at, is why they're leaving.
Do we currently look at, and will we look at, using teachers as the example, the retention rates at years of experience, different levels, you know, zero to five, or that type of thing? To see that, well, at year fifteen, we were doing something different here, or anything like that?
I don't think we currently have anything that's by year of service, in terms of retention rates.
I thought the report we get, tell, gives us the code for the reason, and the years of service that employee has when they depart.
Right, but we don't aggregate it to do some analysis on it at this point.
But the data is available.
You get it as a, kind of a piece at a time. But we could aggregate it, and I think that that would be another way of looking at it.
Yeah, and that might be a piece of secondary data that the HR folks would look at to help further define what the issue is, and develop a solution.
I guess payroll has to have that number right now, because they know how many people are at fifteen years, or sixteen years, or whatever. So that, those numbers must be very easy to get.
Right, the difference is the accumulation, the disaggregation, and analysis of that we haven't done.
Another way to look at that, in AEIS, you know, they break out your teaching population based on years of experience. And so you can even look at trends in that data over time, to see if you're not retaining teachers with longer years of experience.
How does this tell us about our effectiveness in supporting our staff, teachers, everyone? I get it for the retention, but in terms of whether they feel like they're supported, we hear that a lot from teachers. You know, they either feel they're supported, or they don't feel they're supported. There's another one that captures it later? Okay, so this is really just about staff retention, then, in essence?
This is kind of, will identify if there are issues and with which group they are. Unfortunately, the best thing to help us with teacher retention was the bad economy. You know, so the teacher turnover rates statewide have dropped significantly because, you know, bad economy, so.
I'd rather not have that again.
Measure twenty-one sort of deals with some of the other issues that you're referring to. Here, we're looking at staff perceptions of the work culture in their campus or their department. So here's where we're looking at, are people unhappy, you know, of course, it won't just, it won't be simple and straightforward, are you happy or unhappy? But look at their perceptions about different aspects of their role in their campus, or their situation.
So you're surveying them about how?
About the work, their satisfaction sort of with their own work environment.
But just within their campus?
Where they work, yeah.
Okay, so you're not saying, how satisfied are you with the district overall? You're saying, how satisfied are you with your facility?
Well, it's sort of like with your job, and so, things that would impinge upon that are going to probably color their perception. So they're not going to be happy in their campus, probably, if they're not happy with everything that happens outside of their campus. But, you know, we don't have the survey, you know, in mind or developed for this particular measure, so we could, we could look beyond the campus.
Right, absolutely. We've left this open enough so that our surveys could fill in those areas we were very interested in, like, you know, the district moving in the right direction and things like that.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Now, twenty-two looks at customer satisfaction, and in this measure, we're looking at staff perceptions in terms of service provided by other departments. So, transportation, custodial, technology, communication. So we're allowing them to assess how well-served they feel by other departments.
Is there any other form of really being able to go out and determine satisfaction of central administration, teachers, within the different workgroups, other than just looking at surveys? Sometimes, what's that?
It's the next one.
It's the next one, okay, I want to wait for it.
Do you want me to go there, and then?
Yeah, I'll go there.
And you can tell me if it's the next one.
Go there, then I'll talk.
The next one looks at customer service, but in a different way. It looks at having those departments that provide services and support to the campuses, having them develop standards by which they operate. For example, in technology, if you have, well, better example, if in maintenance and operations, or wherever HVAC stuff is, okay? If the air conditioning doesn't work in the wing of your building, you know, how quickly is that issue addressed and resolved? So, and, you know, that's just an example, but in any kind of service provision, how quickly is your work order, or your purchase order, or your service request fulfilled? It's timeliness, but it's accuracy of the response, it's all kinds of things that figure into standards for service. And so that's kind of where we want to go with this measure. But this is one that takes time to develop, so we don't expect to have this developed in year one, but to have this in place for year two. So not only do we have the perceptions of staff, of how they're served, but we have individual indicators for departments for the service expectations that they provide.
That's what I think is important, is that you have, you have more than that one matrix there. Because unfortunately, you use air conditioning. A school starts, the first week of school, we're a hundred and fifty degrees outside, and we've got six schools that air conditioning units are down. You know, the maintenance departments are trying to make their rounds as quickly as possible. But if you orchestrated a survey on that given week, man, that thing is going to come back bad. And, you know, it may be the same type of development if you start out a brand-new school year. What's your perception of starting out a new school year, and you've got a number of new principals in, and the staff and the principal has yet to meld? Well, you're going to have a, you're going to have a negative. That's why, sometimes I have an issue when someone brings me a survey, you know? Because the things I'm going to immediately go and look at is, I'm going to look at the number of respondents. Somebody's bringing me a survey and saying, hey, this school's having trouble, but there's only fourteen of ninety staff members. I'm going to say, no, there's only fourteen people that have trouble. It seems like the rest of them are doing pretty well. And so, you know, that's why I'm always skeptical a little bit on a, on a survey basis. You know, it is a good means of showing improvement. But that's why I like to see as many matrices or avenues that we use as possible to really determine what the issues are.
That's a very good point, because, you know, you may not have an issue with one of the services that's being provided to you, but you may have three friends at three other schools that are always complaining about some piece of service that they're not getting provided well, and so that could color your perception of the service, even though your service is fine. So you have to have, like you said, additional measures. All the way through here, you know, we do want to have as many measures of an area or a focus as we can, and not rely on just one piece of data to gauge success or performance levels.
Do we have anything like a troubled ticket reporting system? So whether it's a request for support, or a some type of complaint, or something like that, that we track, and we basically open a ticket, and then we track how quickly it was closed, and the level of the issue that it was?
Yeah, the stronger systems are in maintenance and technology, with the help tickets and the service requests, and things like that, right now. So those do exist with help tickets and work orders and things like that, or service requests.
And so maybe looking at ways of expanding that to include other, other support and service areas, whether it's, in my mind, it's as wide as if a teacher submits a complaint about another teacher, another staff, or whatever, that's kind of a troubled ticket, and, okay, what do we do, how quickly do we resolve this issue? And so, I know we probably don't have something like that, but I think that goes to what Mr. Hibbs is talking about. Then we can, you know, this is, this is what, you know, the private industry does. I mean, that's how they measure, you know, okay, how long was this particular customer on hold? How many customers did we answer the phone on the first ring? And so, because they know that that's an indication of satisfying the customer. Customers like to, they don't want to be on hold forever, they want somebody to answer on the first ring, that kind of thing. And so, if we're measuring these things, we may not be measuring whether they're satisfied or not, but these are pretty good indicators that, that we're delivering, you know, satisfactory results. And so, a troubled ticket type system for all these might be.
That's exactly what we're talking about in this kind of measure, because almost all of the, because of all the technology that we have in transportation, across the different business functions of the district, they all have those systems pretty much built in. But it's, sometimes what you need to do is say, well, you know that the in, but it's, sometimes what you need to do is say, well, you know that the phone was answered on the fifth ring, but we really want it on the second ring. So you set the standard for where you want that performance to be. So, you know, we pretty much can collect the data through the system, but it's developing the expectation, where you want that expectation to be.
Have, have we looked at, this is internal customer service, have we looked at external, beyond, say, the parents, as far as, you know, with the city, or vendors, or community groups, anything like that, to put a little bit broader scope on the measure?
Well, we will be, on another measure, you'll see, we will be looking, we will be looking at parents in terms of their satisfaction.
Sure.
You know, kind of customer satisfaction piece, but we really haven't extended that to, like, to the vendors, or, we haven't talked about expanding it beyond, beyond sort of the main stakeholders, I guess.
Okay. Dr. Rice, I had that exact same comment on, on twenty-two, including parents, and, and then others that interact with district personnel, i.e. vendors, contractors, applicants, job applicants, is what I'm thinking about. If, if we're, again, if we're driving a, a, a culture of great customer service, then, then I think we're talking about great customer service to anyone that interacts with our, with our organization, and so we don't wanna leave those out. Obviously, the students, the staff, and the parents are, are most important customers, but there's others, and certainly there's value in providing good customer service to our community, to our vendors, to people that apply with us, that are interested in coming to work for us, and so we, we do need to capture that as well.
I think that's really a primary concern, because so many of the problems that percolate to us are directly from bad customer service.
Right.
Parents, vendors, stakeholders, I don't particularly like that word. If they were handled right to start with, we'd never hear about them, so.
And staff to staff, administration.
I would suggest that we also consider adding board customer service, too. We're measuring everybody else.
All right, let's keep going.
We're nearing the, the end. Leadership training. We have, you know, part of the strategic plan focuses on leadership development, and so what we're, want to do with this measure is look at the effectiveness of that training, and, you know, we talked about in the student survey earlier on about looking at leadership and some of those pieces, and students are ones, I think, later in the process that will be the beneficiaries of some more work in terms of leadership. But for this initial piece, we're looking at the sort of evaluation of how effective that training is, and we may wanna do, you know, work that's like a follow-up on that training in terms of other aspects of leadership development.
Anyway, with this being June twenty thirteen, so that's the first time that we're actually going to use this as a measure?
Well.
Or when we're gonna start it, 'cause I'm thinking, we don't have the leadership development programs in place to build capacity throughout the district from, you know, from, from any, any department, any, any level of staff, so I didn't know, and I hadn't looked at our matrix to see if that's, you know, all through year one, and then this is year two, so I was just curious on that.
I, I think in year one, there will be some leadership development.
There will be some, but I think in this one, it's more about the coaching of, of leaders, and I think one thing that, without getting too far off, off on a tangent, on the previous measure, when you talk about even customer service, or even leadership development, et cetera, two things that are really important that are behind the scenes on this is, number one, once you get that data about customer service, what do you do about it? That, that's, that's a big one, and that's really not
Yeah.
a metric right now. What do you do about it, and then how do you help people improve? That's the other one, how do you coach them through a process of improvement? But first, you have to have the data, and that's where we are. You have to have the customer service from your external stakeholders and internal customers, and then you have to be able to understand that data and do something about it, set metrics for improvement, and then coach people to develop to meet those standards. And that takes a system, right? That, that is a, basically a coaching system to help people meet their standards. But operationally, what it also takes, and again, without getting too far on, on tangent, it takes that your evaluation systems across the district are aligned with your expectations and your metrics of what you're measuring in terms of customer service. And, and currently, that's, there's a lot of work to be done in that area. So we're looking at different, you know, companies, contractors, et cetera, that can help us with some of that work. A, understanding the data, B, having some action-driven plans for improvement, and then aligning our evaluation systems. That's just what's happening in the background of some of this discussion.
So are, are you saying that essentially what we're looking at employing is a CQI model within the district, Plan Do Check Act type of model, where it's not, not necessarily an outside group that's going to be driving this all the time, and it's not necessarily going to be, you know, extra training or anything like that, it might be, whether it's transportation or food services, or whoever have a, a key committee, if you will, that will go through and, and look at these, see if they've hit targets or not, and then as that committee process, do the whole Plan Do Check Act thing, is that?
Yes, and, and part of that is for, again, without too much detail here, but part of that is, is for every department to have a, a scorecard of their performance, and then how that relates to your evaluation and your, your system of appraisal, if you will, in your department, as, as a leader of that, a department head. And then you do review that scorecard, if you will, of customer service, of timeliness, and, and how you treat people and things like that, how you deal with employees, and you coach them through that process of, of improvement. That's what, kind of the background of this, but first, you need to have a lot of these metrics and surveys ready to go, to, to at least have what your targets, that you're looking for, so that you can then set that scorecard and, and start this work.
Right, well, and I, I think having, having those individuals within those departments involved in, in that CQI process, they're going to create the improvements, the systems improvements, and, and keep themselves moving forward, so, okay.
On the leadership development, you wanna remind us that our goal was to create great leaders, everybody.
Right.
So this applies to students, teachers, administrators, everybody. And so, what are we doing to measure that for the students? You know, and, and what I'm thinking is, we do offer them leadership opportunities already. You can serve on the student body council, you can serve on a number of committees, obviously our board advisory committee is, is a great opportunity, and so how, almost, almost measuring those like a, a AP or pre-AP course, how much of that, how many students have participated in leadership opportunities, percentage of our students are participating in leadership opportunities, maybe programs that, that give leadership opportunities, leadership opportunities to our students, and then to, to, to the teachers, how many students, teachers are participating in the coaching program, all that. I, I think we can put some numbers here, again, perception is, is clearly important, but I think it's as important as, as Mr. Hibs was saying, the actual numbers, the actual data. And if we look hard enough, we, we do already offer quite a few opportunities for leadership training and development, within some of the programs that we have. I think we start measuring it, and then it affects our behavior and saying, okay, we need to create more opportunities partnering up with leadership partners, you know, with youth leadership partners, things like that, that, okay, how many of our students are participating with Optimus Club and leadership, or with Boys and Girls Club, that kind of thing, and so just start looking for those things that we can say, yeah, that's a leadership opportunity, let's, let's, let's count it, and we'll start tracking that, and we'll lead them to improvement.
And let me put a caveat on that, just not discounting it, but even expanding it, giving more opportunities to it. I think that's what we want to make sure that we're doing.
And I think the, the bulk of this work, in terms of student, was moving into year two, I think, and that's why you don't see so much of it, because the first year was more of the aligning the appraisal systems and the, and the evaluation of employees, the district, you know, the scorecards for department heads and things like that, but we can certainly start collecting baseline data, like you're, you're saying, I think we, we shouldn't miss that opportunity.
Well, anyone for this, with the leadership training coming, people are like, staff has participated, how many hours of leadership training they have, that kind of thing, so they have.
Yeah, some of those kind of things will be reported in the, the updates that the staff do on their action plan, so they'll, you know, indicate who, what kind of people were trained, you know, the hours of training, that kind of thing, so that'll come back as a part of the updates.
Yeah, I'd like to see it as part of the district report, and then report the hours, and the people participating in training and all that, so that it's not just the perception. I appreciate that, but you all have to see the actual numbers of who participated in the hour, they participated.
Twenty-five, it looks at parent satisfaction with engagement, and here is what we were trying to pull together in this piece, is parent perceptions of support, you know, how the school supports them in working with their children to help them instructionally and be successful in school, engagement of parents, and those kinds of things that would help them be of support, and then communication with the schools. This is also where the parent satisfaction with some of the customer service pieces for parents would be pulled in. So this is, this will be a parent survey that will look at several aspects of parent engagement on behalf of their kids, and then with respect to operating with the campus and the district.
Have, have, has it yet been determined, the, the length of surveys or the frequency of surveys? Because obviously, there's great danger in surveying to death
Yeah.
and not getting to data.
Yeah, I know, you have to, have to think about that. This survey, the surveys that are mentioned here, for the most part, are annual surveys.
Okay.
Now, within the action plans that all the staff have written, they themselves may have some survey work that is to gather some information, some data, or, or focus groups, other ways to collect feedback to help them in the planning process for a new program or news, new approach to whatever they're working with. So these surveys are meant to be at the, you know, for example, for parents, we wouldn't survey every, every parent, we would use a sampling system, where we would sample parents to be able to report, and we would wanna disaggregate that by, not at the campus level, but maybe at the elementary level, middle school level, high school level, because you might expect that you would see differences in parent engagement at the different levels. So this, this particular one, and most in this list of measures, would be annual, and they, and most of them are gonna, of course, have to occur in the spring, or, or early spring, throughout the spring.
One, one suggestion I would have is for getting a little bit more participation is, whether it's in this annual tool, or in a quarterly process, have very short, like a one-question, just throw it out there, one-question survey, and people will respond to that a lot easier, a lot faster than, oh, it's just one question.
Yeah.
I mean, any survey that you get, oh, this'll only take five to ten minutes of your time, that statement alone drives people away. If you just say, one question, and then on our master plan, that adds up to a ten-question survey after a period of time, there we have all the data that we were trying to collect.
Yeah, you know, I, I've worked with several school districts in, with parent surveys, and it is amazing to me, the limited, very, very small number of refusals you get. If the school, if you call on behalf of your school district, asking a parent about the experiences their child has had, and they have had, and, you know, that context, I mean, you might have trouble getting them on the phone, but once you get them on the phone, have very few refusals. And most of the survey work that I've worked with in, you know, five, ten districts, is usually, you know, twenty minutes in length, where, you know, they have to commit twenty minutes, and you tell them that upfront, very few refusals, which I think is a testament to their commitment to
Great care.
to, to the schools.
Great care. In danger of sounding like a broken record, we already have data here in terms of how many hours parents volunteer, how many parents volunteer, and this is, I think, would be a good one to disaggregate per, per campus in terms of, you know, your campus has twenty percent parent volunteer participation, and there's another campus very similar to you that also has, you know, that has higher, lower, whatever, and so this is actual data that we already collect, I, I, well, they may not, some campuses do collect volunteer hours, some campuses don't. I know Dido, for example, does, because they, they award certificates based on the number of hours you, you volunteered, and so guessing a good number of them already do.
Some of them do, but it's not formalized, and that's the part that we need to make sure it's formalized, so that we can rely on the data.
But that's engagement, I mean, if they're coming in and spending hours in, in the school, they're engaged, that, there's, there's no doubt about that.
You know, in, in this particular, you know, on another measure, you'll, you're gonna see that, but in this particular context, in, in terms of engagement, we're really talking more about, not necessarily volunteering your time to the school, but your engagement with your child in the school. So for this measure, we're talking almost like a different level of engagement, but you'll see the kind you're talking about probably on the next slide.
I didn't see it on the, I looked.
We'll see.
I looked at the next one, just in case this time, but I didn't see it, maybe I didn't read.
I always say, well, it's, it's next.
This one's parent university, that's.
And here, we're using parent university here to talk about the concept of offering, you know, opportunities for parents to learn and, and improve their own parenting and, and support of their child. So here, we're talking about the participation in, in that kind of, of course, or class, or program, and then also talking about what kind of offerings the district and the campuses have that would provide parents that kind of focus and, and support. But then there's another one.
Okay, 'cause this is, this doesn't get what I was talking about.
Okay, yeah, but there's another one.
I didn't look two ahead, I just looked one ahead.
This one is, I think, what you're probably referring to. And here, we're, we're talking about partnerships and parent engagement opportunities, where do we give parents another attempts to support the school as, as opposed to supporting their child? So we're talking about the kinds of partnerships with community groups, or universities, or whatever kind of partnerships, business school partnerships, we're talking about mentors and tutors that work directly with kids, and we're talking about schools with active volunteer programs, where parents come in and volunteer their time for whatever the need is of the school. So this may hit more on, so we have really different levels of kinds of parent engagement that we're referring to across these measures.
Yeah, I think that one I'm talking about is just a little bit more detail under the number of schools with active parent volunteer programs.
Because you're talking about more detail of
How many parents are volunteering, how many hours are they giving you?
Hours, and, yeah.
That kind of thing, so, yeah.
You know, and, and I, I support having as much data as you need to help you make good decisions, but I just say this is a, a note of caution, you don't want the data gathering process to be so onerous that it takes you more time to gather the data than it's worth knowing whatever it is you find out.
Right.
So I would just offer that as a caution when, when we're trying to gather data.
Right, and I, and I know Ms. Pampa wasn't meaning to say, okay, this campus has five thousand volunteer hours, and then you look over at another campus and why, and say, why don't you have that many?
Yeah.
Well, because we realize that the demographics between schools where a school like Dito may have more, only one parent within the family unit working, so there's more opportunity than say something of a school, the X over here that both parents are working very diligently, so they don't have the opportu- opportunity to volunteer as much. So I, I don't think that that's what he was necessarily meaning. I think that is by gathering that, that data, you can always say, okay, you know, is there ways of improving? So, you know, I
No, I meant comparing schools that are comparable to each other.
Yeah, that's a slippery slope.
I'm the mean business guy, remember that.
Yeah, that's a slippery slope.
I'm thinking if, if, if your demographics are pretty similar,
Yeah.
then you should have pretty similar, uh, performance in terms of some of the things we can measure. So, yeah, if, I'm not going to compare a Dito to a school in East Arlington that maybe doesn't have that kind of, you know, demographics. But if they're next to each other, you know, within a few blocks, there may be some comparisons.
We want to encourage all the, that we've got a good parent involvement. And I think that's what we're looking at here.
You know, one thing, uh, some data I was looking at of your district is how you have all these people giving money to schools and supporting schools through donations and things. That is such powerful data and you look and you read that. I think we will need to be able to incorporate that piece in here too, even though it's not written down. I've been thinking about that and how powerful that is. Because when you want people to support your schools, they don't have to physically come in person, you'll take their money, you know? So there's all kinds of ways to support by your time or your, you know, your presence and your money and, you know. We hope to be able to gather all those pieces.
Is there a differentiating factor or determinating factor of what constitutes active? As far as active parent volunteer programs?
Well, I sort of put, I say I put that on there because I use that as a descriptor. But I think that's probably going to have to be a definition that's developed. And so we, as a district, need to decide how we're going to define and, and what parameters we use around that measurement.
And the other thing I would add to that is, you know, right now we can look at active parent volunteer programs. I, I think it would probably be either another measure or something that would be broadened to go not just parent volunteer, but just volunteer programs. Because I, with our community engagement piece,
Right.
uh, I would definitely see an increase in non-parental volunteers in the campus.
Yeah. We hope to be able to gather and, and report and, and see increases in all kinds of involvement, both through, you know, those partnerships with community and university and all kinds of community organizations and, but also the focus on, you know, the instructional side too, on the mentors and tutors, the things that, you know, would, I mean, all of it hits kids indirectly, but more specifically too, so.
Do mentors and tutors that come in from, say, other, outside of the district, do they have to fill out a volunteer, uh, application? Just like everybody else?
Yeah. And, and when there are official tutors that are paid, they have to pass a background check and things like that.
And then when somebody, let's say a high school student is going to go tutor a ju- a junior high student, do they have to sign up as a volunteer and
Right.
student, there's a student volunteer form? So we already know how many vol- volunteers we have, right?
In essence, we do. It's, it's, it's back to how you define the, the volunteer part and, and active and what type of, you know, on campus or are you, you have to physically be there and things like that. It's, it's how you define it and then we can measure it, absolutely.
Okay. We're on twenty-eight. This last measure, not only last in the sequence, not in importance or anything, is, um, looking at support for the, for the whole strategic plan. And, um, we want to gather perceptions of parents and staff and community regarding the efforts the districts making in terms of this strategic plan. So we need to, sort of the report card piece where we need to get a, a report, feedback from them about how well are we doing in terms of making progress in this effort? So it's pretty straightforward. The community input's a little bit more difficult to gather because of, you know, there's a lot more community than there are parents and students. So, you know, we may have to accomplish that through focus groups and some other more individualized efforts, capture that.
So those, those perceptions are going to be, I, I think largely determined by our communications.
Exactly. They will be.
I mean, they'll have our internal metrics, obviously, as well as far as how our kids are doing, that kind of thing. But it's how well we're communicating the plan and, and our own internal report card of the progress.
Can, before we go forward, I wanted to share something I found and ask for more of a, um, a definition. It's on our, I'm going to go all the way back to measure five, when we talked about the PSAT and so on. I found on our internet site that for 2012, PSAT, all sophomores enrolled in AISD will be taking the test, the PSAT. It's optional for freshmen, junior, or seniors. And I'm assuming they can take it in advance or retake it. And in, in prior years, when my daughter was at, in high school, the first one was free and then they charged for any additional testing you took. There was a fee. It also says on here that the non-testing students will still report to, to class. The PSAT will not be administered this year on, on Saturday and the registration has already passed. So we already know how many students have registered, but we also offer it to homeschool students. And if we're going to measure, that's another measurement we can use is how well the homeschool students do compared to our own students. So that's another measurement.
I don't know that we, I don't know that we get the data for the homeschool students.
Well, who gets the testing results?
The student. I don't think they aggregate it back to us. We're, in essence, you can be a site, a location, and then you just get your student's data. So when you test on Saturday, for example, others could come, but you would only get your student. I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know if we get homeschool. Do you know what? Okay.
I sort of doubt it. Since we're the ones administering the test, that's why I'm, I was assuming we would get the test results.
We're just a test site, I think.
Location. We're a location that, we have to offer that, I think, to the homeschool.
Okay, because we offer it at Venture High School, but the Venture High School kids have to take it at their homeschool?
We offer it at Venture because we have to have a, a location that offers it on Saturday.
Right, and you, you, you have narrowed it down to who goes to what campus then? If, according to this information, all homeschool students are tested at Venture High School, but the Venture High School kids are tested at their homeschool. So that narrows it down, so Venture's only for homeschool kids.
Correct, but I think we receive the data back based on our kids.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just trying to see, okay, all this, if we're doing all of this, how are we measuring the data we're, we're able to collect?
We don't cover the cost for the PSAT for homeschool kids.
Let's clarify that. Free is not really free, right?
No, because we send two buses, I was reading this. We send the first bus through to pick up the kids who are going to be tested. We send a second bus through to pick up the kids who are coming in later. So that costs money. And then we give the test that costs money.
No, I'm referring to who pays for the test.
Right. We pay for the PSAT test, right? Dr. Carter? The district provides the PSAT test.
No matter how many times the student wants to take it.
I believe that's the first time.
If you're going to take it again, then you pay it yourself, right? And, and the part of the sophomores, all sophomores taking it is you get a reduced cost by having all your sophomores take it.
The district gets a reduced cost.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
But we don't pay for the homeschool children's test. It's just our district kids.
Okay. All right. It was news to me, so I thought I'd share it.
Before we go to the next, uh, steps, can I point out that we don't really have any measurements for the effectiveness of our communication, uh, strategy? So, not that I don't want to add anymore, but how are we capturing how effective we are in communicating everything?
Well, the parent survey, for example, will have, will include the communications piece as a part of that survey. Staff will, when they evaluate the effectiveness of customer service of departments, will evaluate communications as one of the areas. You know, I know there was a communications audit completed, I think in the district recently. So I think communications will be examined by staff and parents. Now, the larger community is not, I think, directly measured, except in the concept of the overall strategic plan in this piece. Communications is part of that. But you, and you or one of the other board members said, the effectiveness of your communication will, will, you know, make a difference in people's perceptions of whether or not you have made progress on your strategic plan.
And then just one more point of the metrics that we have, the twenty-eight metrics. I don't know if this tells us a whole lot, but there are only two that are national-based metrics or measures. The rest of them are state, a lot state, and then a lot of district. But national, the only one we, the only two we have are the, uh, percentage of students, uh, measure number three and then five. And
Three is the norm reference testing of
Which will be national, right?
Right.
And then five is the SAT ACT, uh, testing. And, and so, did I miss one or are those are the only two that we're looking at, how we compare at the national level?
Well, college enrollment and college graduation rates will be compared to the nation. Those, that's measure twelve. Those have, the instructional practices, depending on what instrument you use, can have norms. I think Dr. Cavasas mentioned before, tripod has, you know, norms so that you can compare instructional practice.
Right. The, the key to some of that is the, is the review that we're doing on the surveys. Uh, tripod, for example, the one we mentioned, uh, is, is normed and, and we have data from other states and things like that that we could use. So as part of Dr. Carter's review with the team about the surveys that are available and what we would use, part of that standard is, are they normed?
And then, I don't mean to steal Dr. Rice's thunder because he's the one that's usually pushing the national comparative agenda. But, you know, our, our focus, our, our vision is to be recognized globally as, and so we need to be benchmarking ourselves against the best globally. And so, just as, as, as we continue to look at, uh, since I know this is our first draft and we, this, this will continue to evolve as we, as we move forward, as you guys are looking for more measures, please look at some national norms, types of measures that we can, that we can compare that way, please.
I have a, a question. I, I'm looking at our, our full goal statements and, for example, our goal eight is the positive culture goal. And I've, I've looked through our different measures that touch on that positive culture. And I'm not seeing, uh, for example, anything that is indicative of what we're doing regarding wellness, uh, both for the student body population and our employee population. Are we, did I miss something? Are we looking at that or is that somehow defined within these metrics? And there's a few things like that that I've, I've seen that I haven't heard that are specifically in our goal statements.
Okay, the work culture and environment for staff, that was number twenty-one. Okay, so that's the staff one. Did I misrequ-?
Well, I was specifically talking as an example, wellness. A- as a, are we going to be measuring that like for number twenty-one? Will that, you know, i- is that going to be part of that survey? Are we doing something else to measure metric or have a metric for, you know, insurance claims? Or, uh, you know, if we're doing some type of a wellness program, how many people are involved with it or not? The students, you know, ha- healthy active lifestyles, all those kind of things.
You know, some of those things that you talked about, like, uh, things that you would find in risk management, like worker comp claims and, uh, some of the other kinds of information you talked about, that kind of data is among those 200 other pieces that aren't on here. Staff has a fairly lengthy list of process measures that they would be looking at and analyzing as part of their regular work process and working on these strategic plans. So, you know, and if you were implementing a wellness program, a part of that action plan would be to evaluate that specific intervention. These indicators, um, are trying to look more, look more globally. But it's not that we don't need that kind of data you're referring to. But that, sort of in those secondary measures, that staff should be looking at on a continual basis to determine whether or not they're on the right track with their action plan.
If I could interject that this is a three-year plan? And the, the measures that we're looking at today or tonight are mostly year one.
Year one.
And this, that one you're mentioning is a year three.
Is it? Okay.
Okay, that's good.
And so that, that's where the additions, deletions and things come in. Because there's so many more that are year two and three that still need to be developed and designed and things like that.
And, you know, as those, you know, even the decision of what you do in year three with respect to that particular, you know, might change from now to then.
Sure.
So it'd be better to wait and set those measures at that point, too. Next steps. Revision, if necessary. I think we've talked about several things that, you know, we
We've captured.
may need to capture and incorporate here. And then you're set to take this, uh, the administration's set to take this back to you for approval. Then we'll want to begin the collection of the development of the collection process for this data, which is a fairly significant undertaking because we're talking about a lot of data that, some data that's, it will be fairly straightforward, but some will take development. And staff will continue to implement their plans. We'll report on the progress of implementation of those action plans to you at the end of four months. So in November, you can expect some report back on those. And, um, at this point, we talked about the, uh, November workshop meeting to get that first feedback on the action plans.
I have a question. On, uh, if there are modifications that need to be made of measures, and we have in here that we're going to be, as a board, approving these at our next meeting, I, I would presume. If there are things that, seeing this as a fluid process, will be changing, what do other districts that you've worked with do to be able to be a little bit more responsive to those changes rather than waiting for a full board meeting to approve changes? You know, we have a strategic plan committee. I don't know if that's something that would be held through committee if, if the board so chooses? Or, you know, can you share with us how that process continues moving forward without having the, the time of board meetings as a pipe wrench?
Well, in terms of, of finalizing these measures, is that what you're referring to?
Well, uh, well, if we finalize these measures, approve these measures, uh, I'm looking at the next steps after that. If these measures have to be tweaked or changed or modified, how, how does that process work so it doesn't have to go through a full board review kind of thing?
Well, Dr. Cavasas and I talked about that. So do you want to address it or you want me to?
Well, and, and we could address it in several ways. One is through committee or, uh, through the way that the board actually adopts One is through committee, or, uh, through the way that the board actually adopts them in terms of your motion, uh, and, and your adoption next time, where you give the administration some flexibility to add. We, we've gotten the general concept of a lot of these things, and we're going to bring back the, all the additions and things like that. But then maybe in your motion, you give some flexibility for, um, some additions as we move forward, is, is one way to do it. Or that we stick to these measures and, and then we come back to the board if we, if we add, which could be a bit restrictive.
Sure, no, that's why I'm asking. That's why I didn't know if, uh, working through our, our committee is a strategic plan committee, not necessarily wanting to task our committee with it, but, uh, if that would be a way to do it. I, and, and, in putting it in the words of a motion, I personally don't have a problem with that. I just would want to make sure that we have some type of notification, communication process between administration and board, so that we aren't six months down the road going, well, hey, wait a minute, I thought we were doing this.
I think the key to remember also for everyone is, the whole goal is, are we capturing everything we need to do right now?
Right.
And we're going to constantly, when November comes, may say, hey, let's tweak this. We've got these data sets. What are we looking at here? Because for all seven of us, for senior staff in there, this is a whole new grasp on what we're grabbing. That, that's one of the reasons we brought in Elaine, to help us see what's others happening. So, we, we've got to constantly remind ourselves, for one, make sure we're grabbing all the data right now. That's the key, because once we grab it, and we're grabbing the right elements, we can, I won't say the word manipulate, we can aggregate it in different ways to find some measurement standards. But it's a constant work. So, I have a feeling, when we come in in November, we're going to look at some of the results and say, okay, where do we need to tweak this and change it? Hey, we'd rather see a little more focus on this to get our feedback of where that is. So, I, I don't think we need to, and Dr. Rice, I understand what you're saying. I think give them a little leeway to say, hey, make the best decision of where it comes. In November, if we don't like where it is, let's figure out the next steps from there.
Sure.
You know, and, and even back to the issue of targets. You know, you may want to wait, and knowing that this is a baseline year, some data, you do have some historical data. You may want to wait and set targets after you get baseline data and see where you are. And I think then you'll have a better context to evaluate all the measures and decide where you want those to be in the future. Just a, a thought.
I agree with you on some of those measures. Some of them, because we already have years of data, we may be able to set targets a little sooner. Obviously, the STAR-related metrics, um, yeah. We, I don't think we have enough historical data, but some of the other, uh, metrics that we talked about, where we have as much historical data as we want to go back, I think we can go ahead and start setting targets for those already, uh, at whatever time that we put it back on, on, on the discussion. And then I have a quick question on your, uh, action plan reporting. Do you have any idea of, of, of how that's going to be done yet? Are, are you going to be report, are you, I guess what I'm looking for is, are, are we at some time going to get any type of, uh, leading indicator, metric, so that we know, yeah, we're, we're going in the right direction, four months into it, eight months into it, we're still going in the, in the right direction, so we don't get to the end of the year, and we're like, well, we, we didn't make it. So, there's nothing we can do, because the year's already gone, so now it's just, let's hope to do better next year.
Well, I think the first step in that is this document that we've provided. The, this has the entire, uh, combination of all the action plans that we have thus far, with timelines and dates for implementation for year one. So, this is our best gauge right now, and here's our timeline. Here's what we're going to implement this year. Both process measures, which are very important, because I can't understate those, uh, like the curriculum audit, we have it in mapped out as to when we're going to adopt the, or select the company to do that, and then when we're going to get a report and the results and things like that. So, as far as operations, this is, this is our guide right now.
Okay.
And you, we, we can update this as we move along, um, every month or two months of where we are on the progress. Uh, the facilities assessment, that RFP that we put out, for example, that's a big step. And when is it due back? And when are we going to bring it back for the board adoption and things like that? Is how we're going to measure some of these things, um, or, or inform of, of our progress. I think the next big step is selecting those surveys, because a lot of the measures are dependent on, on the surveys and the national kind of norming and things like that, that, that we've talked about. Uh, so those are the big next steps, in my opinion.
And, and what's important, and I'll go back to what Mr. Hogg was saying. We're looking at approving the measures. We're not trying to, uh, approve the tactics that's taking place here. The tactics, it will, it will come. So, when we come to the next meeting, we shouldn't be looking and saying, okay, we want to add a bunch of different items into it, or rehash everything that we've been through. Well, what we're talking about is specifically approving the measures that we saw tonight. So, you know, unless you really have some thorn in your side for one particular measure right now, then would, then when we come back with this at the next meeting, there's, there's not, there shouldn't be a lot of rehashing or a lot of additional discussion. So, you know, that's why we have you here. We should be able to go ahead and, um, put, bring those to light now.
Mr. Hibs, perhaps to facilitate that as well, uh, we'll work with Elaine, and she, she does this. I know she's already, uh, thinking of this, but we'll redline everything that we've added based on our discussion tonight, and we'll send it ahead of time, so you know where we talked about national, where we talked about collecting volunteer and things like that, that those things are very obvious to, to the board as to, that we've captured what you asked for. So that when we do come back for, um, a recommendation, you have that information.
Because, again, the recommendation's just on the measures.
So, is the action plan reporting the, uh, I'm, I'm looking at the end of the four months. That coincides with our, our reports for these me, the measures as well. Is that right?
No. Well, I thought the measures go back to in October.
The, the actual adoption, are you asking when we're going to adopt them?
No, no, just the actual reporting.
The reporting, the first report in November is more about, I think, the...
The activities.
The activities and the actions. Like, where are we in the curriculum audit? Where are we in the facilities assessment? Because these other outcomes are annual, and they're, after you have baseline and surveys and things like that. So, the quarterly reports are more about the process measures.
Right.
I think that's a better way of saying it, and...
Yeah, I, I understand.
Things like that.
Okay.
Thank you, Elaine.
Guess you don't have any more questions now.
Very happy with what you've done. All right, board, uh, what we're going to do now is skip on down the road to district and campus performance goals and objectives, because we have to vote on this next time. Dr. Cavasas.
Thank you, President Barron. This, uh, discussion we just had about the strategic plan metrics are very important and central to the next discussion, which are campus and district plan. It's important to note that we adopted the, or the board adopted the strategic plan August second, and our campus plans and district plan were being developed in May, and June, and July, and, and some of August. So, what you're going to see here is this kind of a, um, you know, how we develop district and campus plans before the strategic plan. Uh, the important part here is to know that these documents are compliance documents, that we must have, the, the district and campus plans. But that, that, I think the bigger point is that we're going to transition these plans into our strategic plan metrics that we just talked about. Um, and that's the future look of this. So, Mr. Harvey, would you please present?
Yes. I won't use this tool. At least not yet. President Barron, Dr. Cavasas, and members of the board, uh, as Dr. Cavasas just said, we're going to briefly give you a, an overview of district and campus improvement plans. Uh, first of all, uh, board policy, BQ legal, uh, gives us the guidance on what the district improvement plan should look at, that it is required to be developed and evaluated annually, um, and that the purpose is to guide the district and staff in the improvement of student performance, including for special ed students. Uh, the timeline for these current plans that we're looking at tonight, as Dr. Cavasas said, began before we adopted and really introduced the strategic plan to, uh, our staff and to the campuses. So, back in March and April, um, the improvement plan teams were put together. Uh, in March and June, they were doing their, uh, needs assessment and starting to build the plan. In June, they submitted their preliminary plans, and that's also when they were getting their EOC and STAR results back in. Um, and so they continued to, uh, refine those plans, and in August submitted their final ones to be reviewed by district staff. Uh, we're presenting them here, um, in September, and in October, we'll bring them back to you for adoption. Again, the instructions really that we gave to, uh, our campuses and, and district staff was that there really was not, we didn't want to have significant revisions to these plans for several reasons. We, we knew that the strategic plan was coming. We were well into the development of that with you at this time, uh, when, when these were being developed, but it had not been released. There was really no way for them to, to utilize that information as they created it. But in addition, there was no state accountability, uh, ratings in this school year, and there were no STAR standards, uh, for the two thousand and twelve assessments. And so, those were all things that led us to tell campuses not to have significant revisions in the, the previous plans. So, these really became compliance documents. Um, they were based on the needs assessments that the campuses and, and departments were utilizing, but they do meet state requirements, um, and they do address STAR accountability. The plans are posted on the website. I think all of you received that link. They're not posted on the live site yet, because those are still our eleven, twelve adopted plans, but this site, um, i- is out there and can be used to, to view the twelve, thirteen plans. So, just to very quickly, a few highlights that are in the district improvement plan for twelve, thirteen. Um, the first three really have to do with, uh, STAR-related issues related to the curriculum assessments, our instruction, and our staff development. These are all obviously very critical, that we continue to focus on that, um, in, in our plans with our campuses and the district. In addition, we have, uh, we wanted to highlight Avid Program. We know that's a, a very successful college readiness program that we do at all of our secondary schools. Also, implementing our state curriculum, that's our Curriculum Central, a, a unbelievable, uh, resource that's available to our teachers, that really gives us that consistent curriculum across the district. Uh, support for vertical alignment, to make sure that we have a consistent, uh, curriculum from pre-K up through twelve. Um, and I would be remiss if I didn't put a technology one in here, uh, that we, we want to, we, we have, uh, strategies in there to ensure that the bond program, where we're purchasing technology and putting it out on campuses, that we are, uh, implementing that and, uh, making sure that our teachers and students have the resources they need. Uh, we continue to implement CARES in the district. All, he, all staff that is hired goes through CARES training still. Uh, our counseling program, again, where we have some really critical, uh, potential issues related to suicide, um, anti-bullying, we, we make sure that all of our counselors receive up-to-date training on that, and then provide that training to our campuses, uh, that we're compliant in our state and federal programs, such as Title I, uh, special ed, and, uh, that we provide accurate and timely information to the CBOC. And we do that with quarterly meetings with the CBOC, and they come and report to you, I believe, twice a year. And then finally, that, uh, our personnel department, uh, works with our campus staff to make sure that we are hiring and retaining highly qualified teachers. So, now, the next steps, um, and, and again, this is what Dr. Cavasas was just talking about. On October, you will approve these compliance, um, documents that we have presented and, and posted online. But really, I think more importantly, is that in October is when we'll start now to create the new framework for, uh, these, uh, district improvement plans that are tied to the strategic plan, and the eleven goals that are there, and to these measures that Elaine Say has now been presenting to us. That those are the things that we really are going to want to tie our campus improvement plans back into. So, in October, we'll create what that new framework is, once you've adopted these, uh, measures. At the same time, we're actually also looking for a new online tool. Uh, the process of creating the district and campus plans, and how we publish them and maintain them and update it is rather tedious, and so we're looking for an online tool, uh, that will really assist our campuses and our departments in creating this next round that's, uh, aligned with our strategic plan. So, in November through January, our campuses will then be realigning, updating, and improving their campus improvement plans in this new framework tied to the, the new goals and the strategic plan, and to these new measures. And in February, we will then bring those improvement plans back to the board. And I can answer any questions you may have.
I should see as our goal that we will not need campus improvement plans. Is that a reasonable goal?
It's state required.
Yeah, I, I think we'll continue to have, that, that is the guidance, I think, for our individual campus on how they're going to implement strategic plans. So, I think we'll continue to, to have...
Does every campus have a campus improvement plan, or only the AU ones?
All campuses. The AU campuses, it's, instead of a CIP, they have a school improvement plan in addition. And, and that's only for those AU campuses that have a school improvement plan.
Okay, thank you.
Two things. One, what I foresee, talking, expanding on the, the CQI discussion from earlier, is that we, we would actually expand improvement plans, uh, beyond, we'd have our campus plans, but we would also have our, our different department improvement plans, just as part of the whole continuous quality improvement, uh, process. I am curious, even though we are transitioning to the new, uh, a, a new model that will meet state requirements as far as reporting requirements, but will also provide alignment with our strategic plan and, and, and be a useful working document. Last year, when these came up, it was discussed that we had not, you know, we've reported them, hadn't really looked at them real closely, um, and it was our hope and intent last year to, uh, for the, this set of plans to have some type of measures in place of how close did we hit our marks on those campus improvement plans? Did any of that kind of process go? Even though I know we're transitioning to a better model, did, did any of that happen from last year's to this, this plan, to these plans? Was there any, any analysis of how close they hit their, their targets or not?
I- in the sense of, w- we did go back with the campuses and with the district plan and, and looked at, did you meet the objectives that you said? So, it, it was a yes, no type thing. But based on each objective, did you meet those?
Okay.
And, and so, we, we did collect that data, uh, within that existing set of plans.
And then, I, I guess, on the, the ones that were no, uh, were included in the...
Right, and then definitely then would have been put back in here and, and be done.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I knew you were going to ask me that. Uh, I'm sorry, I don't have that, and, and we'll make sure and include that in the information we send you. Yeah. We'll, we'll provide that in the next...
And, and just to add one, interject one thing here, that, um, with those yes, no, I mean, the, the, the metrics weren't consistently applied at the different campuses. I mean, it, when we had that discussion about revising the plans, then came the strategic plan development, and we knew that that process would be a lot more robust than, than the standard state compliance document, as an example. So, keeping some of those things in mind also, that, uh, those objectives were worded in certain ways because there was no STAR accountability, that you, you really weren't having tax performance anymore to measure. So, just some things to keep in mind.
So, just in terms of utilizing the campus improvement plans, as we go throughout the district, the business schools throughout the year, if we bring it up and we say, uh, you know...
Tony?
They're numbered, if I say, what year of campus improvement plan, item three, how are you dealing with it? Will they know what it is?
Uh, I, I would say that many of the, the campuses utilize that, that tool all year long. And, and, I mean, one of the things I, I would gaze at on is, is that they use it as a living document, and, and my office coordinates posting those, and, and we get them very frequently. We've made a change, we're, we're, we've, we've made some adjustments, and so we get those in very frequently. So, I, I do think that they're documents that the campuses are using, uh, to, to guide them through the year.
I noticed this year while reading them, that many of them had the, um, in their overviews, the, uh, a stated goal of intentionally using that, and that it, they, they do guide and go through them each year. I know, I noticed, uh, that trending this year in the overviews, so...
And, and I know that we eventually have to approve them, but before they come to us, you know, last year there was some issues where there, anybody else had looked at them and approved them. Has somebody at the administration level, either the contacts, as you've laid them out... out, and eventually, obviously, it'll be the assistant superintendents, but has somebody worked with that individual campus and say, yes, I think this is, this is going to get to where you want to go? Have they been approved by somebody else other than us, or were just the ones?
The answer is yes, they've been looked at and they've been reviewed, and mostly by Debbie Williams and Evan Smith in terms of the approval process.
And they look kind of glass-eyed, so I can tell they've probably reviewed quite a few of them.
They've dealt with them and.
And they have them.
Yeah. And really, the key, and we talked to principals about this during their summer training, is the big transition. And so one point to make sure we clarify is that in February, when we come back to the board with the new model, it's not for approval of the plans because we would have already approved them. It's so you can see the design and how it all is aligned with our strategic plan.
Sure. I think the point was they're going through a lot of work to put these together. We didn't want them to just put them together so that they can sit in itself, but that they're leading their behavior, their organization.
Really, I believe that that's the case.
And we can't, you know, read through every single one of them and understand the, where the school is and what they need to do, but my expectation is that somebody at the administration can do that and is doing that, and basically, we're saying, okay, well, that's fine, we'll approve that.
That's correct. We have gone through and reviewed all of them.
Since Debbie and Evan have brought those big stacks of things, did you want us to ask you questions?
Well, the whole purpose of these campus improvement plans is so that the parents can go on and understand them. So I mean, it is imperative that we're able to understand them because each one of the parents need to understand these if they go onto the website and pick up their individual schools' campus improvement plans, because that's telling the parents, okay, this is where we're, what we're addressing on our campuses, these are the areas that we, we want, or where we want to go and where we want to excel in.
And we talk about there were no revisions, but I want the public to be clear that the entire plans were looked at and reviewed and the needs assessment, and they were.
And they were revised.
All revised, you know, and so, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you.
Are you on for teacher appraisal?
No, sir.
We're going to do one more item. It'll be the teacher appraisal system, and we'll skip the gas fund until another time.
Okay. Mr. Jones is here to present on our teacher appraisal pilot, and part of that is to connect it to our strategic plan, but also because we're going to bring it back for action the next time as part of participating in this pilot. And Mr. Jones has a brief presentation.
Understood, sir. Yes, sir. President Barron, Interim Superintendent Dr. Cabasus, may it please the board, good evening. It's still evening, so I feel comfortable saying that. We are indeed, Mr. Harvey, I have done something. Anything is the problem, I'm afraid. Here this evening to talk to you about our participation in the teacher appraisal pilot for the Arlington ISD. As we look at this, we'll go backwards slightly just so we can have a framework for understanding of where we are from the state measurement level. Prior to 1981, teacher appraisals were not required throughout the state of Texas. With the passage of the Term Contract Nonrenewal Act, those became a featured player in every district across the state. That led to the creation of the TETAS model in 1984. You'll notice that for 13 years, TETAS was the state adopted appraisal model, replaced by the Professional Development and Appraisal System in 1997. Although we've come a little late to the PDOTS party, it is indeed time for the state to begin looking at a new appraisal model for the teachers throughout the state, and so they're in the middle of that process now. So why a change at the state level? A change at the state level is necessary at this point for two specific reasons. One, the age of the document. When you look at the advances that we've made in our understanding of pedagogy, our understanding of evaluation, our understanding of teacher appraisal and behaviors, and looking at teacher preparation programs, the age of the document renders it necessary to be changed. And secondly is the inflation of scores that we've seen. When I say that we've seen, we've had data from, for one year out of, out of the PDOTS history. That's due to the state legislature requiring that all districts report that data back to their region service centers. And for the one year that that requirement was in effect before it was waived by the commissioner due to a lack of funding, every school district that utilized PDOTS sent their information back in to the state. And in that one year, 98% of all teachers in Texas graded out at proficient or better. Now, not to say that's an impossible task. It is indeed possible that all teachers could be proficient, but when you look at the results, it's not exactly likely. So the state is beginning its change process at this point. The TEA is doing so by establishing the Teacher Appraisal Advisory Committee with 20 different teachers nominated by region, and these teachers represent all backgrounds, all levels of education, from elementary to middle to high school, regular education, advanced education, bilingual and special education classes. Five campus principals augment that committee. They've had two meetings to date with one scheduled for this fall. TEA meets consistently with the teacher professional organizations at the state level to debrief the attack committee and to get their feedback and input as they go forward. So we're in year one of their pilot process, and TEA has requested about 100-plus campuses, give or take, throughout the state that would participate. And there are two different appraisal models that are being utilized during this pilot year. The first model is the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching, NIET, Teacher Appraisal Process Rubric. And the second model is through an organization called Teachscape, and it's basically the Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Teaching. Next year, pilot year is 12, 13. In year 13, 14, there'll be the beta pilot, and the state hopes to have over 1,000 schools to participate in the beta pilot. The data from this year's pilot will be used to select the appraisal methodology used for the beta pilot. Again, they hope to expand it tenfold, all in preparation for the new statewide system to be introduced in 2014, 15. When we look at our participation in the pilot, we currently have four campuses slated to participate in this initial stage of the pilot. Carter Junior High, Hutchison Junior High, Crow Elementary School, and Morton Elementary School. And we've been selected as a district to use the National Institute for Excellence in Teaching Teacher Appraisal Process Rubric. So why AISD participation in the pilot? It's threefold, and the first reason behind that would be, number one, to meet the challenges of the strategic plan. In the framework of inspired learners, the goal of ensuring that all teachers are highly effective, we look at the evaluation tool being a fair, rigorous, valid, and defensible model that can result in feedback that teachers can apply to professional growth to support their teaching and student learning. And it should also, the evaluation tool, incorporate multiple measures, from classroom evaluation to student achievement gains on different assessments, to pedagogical content knowledge, to surveys of student, parent, and stakeholder perceptions. And secondly, in the framework of effective leadership of recruiting and retaining the most effective people by rewarding their excellence and providing opportunities for continual growth, that growth must be from a fair and rigorous evaluation tool, and that performance must be rewarded by the implementation of a competitive compensation plan. Our participation in the pilot helps us progress towards completion of strategic plan goals. As you know, action plans were developed for each strategy under the strategic plan. Our participation in the pilot assists in the satisfaction of those plans of action, both Strategy 10.1 and 3.1. Furthermore, an RFQ has been created and issued for consultancy services to assist in the recommendation of options for performance-based compensation systems based on evaluation measures that include student performance and stakeholder input. That RFQ has asked the participating companies to send us, the one that's awarded the contract, to research school districts that are successful nationwide. And when we say successful, we look at success across multitude of measures, student performance. In addition to student performance, also the ability to have the, the plan, have some, at least five years of financial backing. So we're gathering the data, and our participation in the pilot helps us gather towards that. Second reason for participation in the pilot, to meet grant participation requirements. The district has applied for a federal teacher incentive TIF grant to help design a performance-based compensation system for seven high-need schools, the four previously mentioned, also to include Sam Houston, Workman Junior High, and Rankin Elementary. The 2012 TIF grants are competitive, and recipients are expected to be announced by September 30th of this year. And finally, we need to begin to gather data to make a future recommendation to you as a Board of Trustees regarding teacher appraisal systems in the AISD. We have options. We can move to the new state system in 2014, 15, once it's decided and implemented. We can choose to remain on PDOTS as a local option after 2014, changing nothing. However, that does not move us towards what we looked at in the strategic plan, so it's not necessarily a defensible option if we choose to go towards that, and we obviously are. And finally, if we choose not to go to a new, the new state system, whatever it may be, if we choose not to remain on PDOTS as a local option after 2014, we will then be in the position of developing a new system as a local option. Our participation to date, the four participating campuses in AISD, again, were assigned to use the NIET Teacher Appraisal Process. Staff training was held at each of the participating campuses on August 24th. An additional administrator training was held today and tomorrow, and then it'll also be held the first part of next week at our Professional Development Center. All staff members are required to go one, through one day of training, with administrators going through an additional two for a total of three. The NIET process features a minimum of two formal appraisals per teacher per year, with half being announced and half being unannounced. The announced appraisals are preceded by a pre-conference between teacher administrator in which goals are set, in which the administrator sets expectations, which the teacher is allowed and encouraged to give information regarding things that are occurring in that classroom. And both the announced and unannounced appraisals are followed by a post-conference where both strengths and areas of opportunity for growth are noted in each. Teachers also submit a self-reflection for each evaluation, both announced and unannounced, and that self-reflection counts as part of their appraisal score. The rubric has four domains, each with varying weights. 75% of the evaluation score is based upon the instructional domain. 15% is the designing and planning instruction domain. 5% is learning environment, with the other 5% being professionalism. All scoring's done on a five-point scale. The appraisers' domain scores that they determine during their evaluations count for 90% of the evaluation. The teacher's self-reflection counts for 10%, and each appraisal score counts separately. What we have here are the different standards that are measured under each of the domains. Under instruction, we have the standards of standards and objectives, motivating students, presenting content, lesson structure and pacing, activities and materials, and questioning. Further continuing instruction, we have academic feedback, grouping students, teacher content knowledge, teacher knowledge of students, thinking and problem solving. The learning environment's measured by four standards: expectations, managing student behavior, environment, and a respectful classroom culture. The designing and planning instruction domain is measured by three standards: instructional plans, student work and assessment, and professionalism is measured by two: growing and developing professionally and reflecting on teaching. Now, for the purpose of our pilot participation, teacher-level student performance data is submitted to the state via third-party entities, and what that does is it allows TEA to look to see the correlation between teacher progress underneath their classroom evaluations compared with student progress. However, it's important to note that teacher-level student performance data will not factor into their appraisals this year. Their appraisals are solely determined by what is observed by the appraiser in the announced and the unannounced evaluations. I imagine there may be questions.
We will go at lights now. Mrs. Peña.
When they, when the person who's doing the appraisal appraises, do we have a time period in which that, let me just give you, for instance.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's say you have a new principal who's going to evaluate someone. Do we have a requirement of a period of days that they have to have done the observation in order to do the appraisal, rather than just they're new, but the teacher or whoever the employee's been there for a while? Do we have a time constraint that they have to have done the observation?
We've not been given any time constraint through the TEA, Region 13, who's training our administrators. Again, I spoke with two of my colleagues who attended day one of, or day two, rather, of their administrative training, and they've not given us any further information regarding dates in terms of frameworks that we must be in compliance by.
What, I think then we need to self-implement it.
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's our plan. Once we get all the administrators through the appraisal process by the 25th, we'll then to be, to bring the appraisers back, look at frameworks to make sure that we're in best practices and have a great understanding between all four campuses so that there's consistency, not only on the administrators on each campus, but between those four campuses as well in terms of our best practices.
Okay, because I, I just can't see somebody giving semi-annual appraisal rating to someone they only observed for 30 days.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, President Barron. On, let's see, you mentioned that there was 100, there's 100-plus campuses participating across the state.
Yes, sir.
Did the state determine those campuses, or did we as a district?
No, sir. We, as districts across the state, had to volunteer to apply.
To be a part of the pilot? And so in that process, we stated which schools, which campuses at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so that's 4%, well, 100-plus, so I don't know how many. And then the beta pilot to include up to 1,000 schools, we're adding only three. Is that our choice, or is that the state's?
Well, that's a good question. We've actually not committed to participation in the beta pilot. Before we commit to that, we will want to look at the experiences on both appraisers, but also the appraised on each of the four campuses. Furthermore, we want to make sure that our participation in the beta pilot would further our completion of the plans of the strategic plan. If it does not get us further towards the completion, towards the successful completion of those, it may be best that we look at developing a local option at that point.
Right. And, and as far as those options, is that how the law states right now for folks that are not choosing to do PDOTS, they can create their own animal as well?
Yes, sir, they can. For districts who choose to create a locally-developed alternative assessment, they would have to come through their District Instructional Development Committee, DIDC, to the board for approval. The board at that time can make comment, but can either vote to accept or reject the model as presented. It can't alter it at that point, but obviously, if it's, if it's rejected, it will be done with comments, and if the board, if the district chooses to bring back another local alternative, it would be wise to incorporate the comments which caused the rejection. And so there are many districts throughout the state who do not use PDOTS. They use their own locally-developed model.
Hmm, okay. Okay, yeah, I was just curious about that. It would seem that there would be a little bit more of a decreased risk in utilizing a state model as far as what's vetted out amongst districts, so, but that doesn't mean that I'd be looking at not potentially developing our own as well. So I was just curious about that.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Papa.
So, thank you, Mr. Jones, actually, for the presentation. It's your first one up here, so.
Yes, sir.
At least since I've been here. I don't know, you might have presented when I missed last, last meeting, but good to have you here.
Thank you.
And are there any plans on using the student performance as part of the evaluation later on, since they are collecting it, and will they factor it into the overall evaluation of the teacher, or are they're still kind of?
That's a very good question. Right now, they're just gathering performance, student-level performance data for program evaluation purposes at the state level in terms of their recommendation for which of the two models we'll carry forward. They are, as a teacher advisory committee, determining and discussing whether or not the state model will feature not only student-level performance data, but also whether it will incorporate student feedback as a component of the evaluation.
Is the other, the other system that's being studied, does it incorporate any student, parent, teacher?
For the pilot, no.
Peer feedback? No, none of them do?
No, sir, not at this time, not for the pilot.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Owens.
Thank you. The Teacher Appraiser Advisory Committee meeting that will be held this fall, how will the district stay in tune with what happens at that meeting? Will have somebody there? Are we going to, what, how's?
Actually, the TAAC, through the TEA website, publishes its minutes very frequently, plus I stay in constant communication. Plus, I stay in constant communication with our Region 13 contact, who supervises this Laurlee Panconine by her name. And so, she and I stay in constant communication regarding our participation in the pilot. TEA publishes the minutes and recordings of the teacher advisory committee very regularly, and so, we stay in communication and contact those methodologies.
They offer something beyond the minutes, so I'd like, so you'd actually hear the discussion of the committee, 'cause sometimes the minutes are, you know, pretty abbreviated, we know what happened.
As we can get them, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, you aren't done yet.
Yes, sir.
So, in my day job, I've spent more time than I care to think about in this rubric. And first question for you, have we included the teacher associations in any of this planning for the incorporation of the downfall of PDS and the upswing towards another rubric?
We have started to have those discussions vis-à-vis the framework for planning for the grant for these seven campuses. Obviously, as we continue forward, whether it's the continuation of PDS with changes to meet the strategic plan, or as we incorporate the state model, or as we develop our own local alternative to be developed and brought before this board, they would have a seat at the table first among equals, because these aren't secret agreements made for people. These are open covenants openly arrived at, and they have very much a stake in this, because we want to make sure that, as we stated in our strategic plan, this is very much a fair evaluation tool and metric for them to be utilized with.
I know how much heartburn there was when we instituted PDS.
Yes, sir.
Just a few years ago. Some board members would really like us to move towards a competitive pay system, and this evaluation rubric is one step in that direction.
It can be, yes, sir.
Well, in my day job, it is.
Ah, yes, sir.
I'm curious, because it's, you said there were two evaluations each year?
Yes, sir, at a minimum.
Okay. And then, one's announced and one's not announced?
Yes, sir, half and half.
Okay. And the full incorporation of the TAP rubric would be four evaluations a year, three announced and one not announced.
Yes, sir, if we do indeed go to that model. Again, for the purposes of the pilot, it's two, and then one announced, one announced, two at a minimum, and maybe more, at the appraisers' discretion.
Do you have access to the rubric that you can provide to the board members?
Not at this moment, but I can get it to you.
Would you do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because it'd be interesting to see. I know that with TTAS or PDS or any of those systems, that if you weren't really graded at the top, you felt bad as a teacher, you know, what did I do wrong, 'cause I'm not perfect? With this rubric, where the scale goes from one to five, three is the accepted norm. So, shoot for a three, and you're fine. In fact, if you get below a three, you don't get any competitive pay. Seldom do people get fives, and there's some people that get fours, who are superteachers. It's an interesting mindset to sell to teachers that, that, no, you're not perfect, okay? And it's okay to be a three, and it's a real hard sell. The evaluators are nationally certified, okay? As far as Mrs. Peña's question about the thirty-days business, as long as the person doing the assessment is a certified evaluator, then it doesn't matter if you've only met the teacher that day. Well, that's the way it is, though. Okay? For example, even under PDS, if a teacher doesn't like their evaluation, then the evaluator's brought in from the district and walk into that classroom and do another evaluation. And that evaluator may have never met that teacher before that day, and we do that right now.
Still doesn't make sense to me.
Well.
Regardless if we do it or not, it does not make sense to me.
Well, it's similar to an umpire going into a ballgame and calling balls and strikes. It's either a ball or a strike. It's a good teacher, good lesson, or it wasn't. The rubric is really cut and dry.
And so, you could, you go in for one session, and then you decide you're going to give a performance award to someone for that one class? And then, somebody who's been a good teacher for six months is not a good teacher because of that one day? That's what you're telling me?
Well, our two days, because you do get two, in our case, two.
See, it still doesn't make sense to me. I mean, we can do, we can do whatever we do, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. But PDS has been that way. You have a bad day, and your PDS day.
My concern is if we're going to go into a, a performance measurement, that our performance measurement be fair. And I don't think of somebody walking in and seeing you do something one day does that. That's my opinion.
Then you want it to be?
It has to be over a period of time. How do you, if you, if you have a good lesson planned that one day, how does it affect that student's performance for the whole year?
Ah, see, under this plan, under the real plan, student performance counts.
So, how would you measure that in one day?
You wouldn't. You measure that when you get your state data back, and that counts into the whole system.
That's my concern.
That's, that's a big chunk of whether you get the merit pay or not.
Right, and that's my concern. And I, I can't see you assessing that student's performance in that one class.
No, you're only assessing the teacher.
Okay. For that one day, but that's not their total performance rating, so to speak. That's, that's my concern. If we're not doing that, I'm okay with it, but if we're, if we're just taking one day, I, I can't.
We're doing that right now.
Well.
With PDS.
Doesn't make sense to me. So, I'm glad we're going to change.
Oh, it may not be any different than what you're seeing then. More questions?
Mr. Hawke first.
Thank you, President Barron. And, Ms. Peña, I know there's some models floating around the country that take into account more than just one day. It's taking into account master teachers, they come in, do an evaluation as a group, and it's multiple evaluations, just for that exact reason. So, there are other models, and as this year, as our staff explores other models, I think that, hearing it from Mr. Barron, you know, there is, hey, listen, we all know, people can have some bad days, but that is why they can't have reevaluations and other evaluations that come into that. Mr. Barron, you briefly touched on, and I have one question for Mr. Jones. Jones, you mentioned a couple times, minimum two evaluations. Is that what we're going with this year, or are we setting a different standard for, you know, maybe our first year, second year, or third year probationary teachers? Are we doing four? Are we doing multiple evaluations? What's, what's our plan on this beta of what we're doing?
And that's one thing we wanted to make sure, after everybody's been through the administrator training, and it's heard everything they need to do, we'll then come together to determine best practices, because, again, as a pilot, there's not another exemplar district from which to choose. We're all in the same boat together. And so, one thing we'll do is we'll discuss things for teachers who might need, be in need of assistance, how we can best provide them that assistance under this plan and still document it accordingly. How many appraisals is the right number of appraisals? Because as the training module says, half are announced and half are unannounced, so therefore, you have an even number of appraisals. You can't have a third appraisal, because you will no longer have half-announced or half-unannounced under this. So, there are some things that we'll need to work out in terms of just internal procedures. And so, obviously, for each of the four campuses, they have very seasoned principals at each. And so, one of the things we want to do is make sure that they know that they're appraising those new teachers in accordance with the pilot, but also to make sure that they have a fair representation of the appraisal. Under the PDS frameworks, at their campuses that are not on the pilot, those new teachers are on a formal appraisal, may only have the one appraisal. And so, it's not as if the campuses that have a PDS evaluation model, those teachers who are in a probationary year, either first, second, or third, are receiving a larger number of evaluations than would be the people on the campuses who are participating in the pilot.
And I understand that. I just think it'd be interesting, you know, I think we'd all know, a first-year teacher is struggling. I mean, it's just, it's a very difficult job. And so, in that first year, you know, we're doing this pilot, some, I think, first-years, maybe you do more, and some you do less, and see if that results in anything better for that pilot, so that we can give the feedback. Because I think it'd be interesting if you come back and you can show, hey, we've seen that if you do four first-year teacher evaluations, two and two, the results are coming back with better results, or we're getting better feedback. I, I don't know. I mean, you could come up with nothing, or it could come up with something where it's just, you don't have to do it at all, but I think if you maybe did a pilot on some, it gives a little better feedback that could be interesting feedback to go for, especially those first years, second year, and third years, and then, once a teacher's established themselves, by all means, they've, they've earned somewhat that right to not be evaluated as much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Papa.
Thank you, President Barron. I, as part of our strategic plan, one of our goals was to develop a, an appraisal system. At one time, we had it for year one. Did we move it to year two?
It's under development this year, yeah. And if you, we kind of went quickly, but in that last slide, I think, it says we have an RFP out for that purpose, to help us design that competitive compensation that includes evaluation structures and things like that.
Okay, okay. It does, it did say a competitive compensation, but did it say to, to design the new evaluation?
Yes, sir, that's, that's a part of the RFQ. Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's part of that proposal. And just to add a little bit more detail, we signed up for the, for this pilot as part of a, a strategy, I guess, because we also applied for the grant, and we included these same schools, because they were eligible. We actually wanted some more schools in this pilot, and the state could not support them. And so, I think it was, it's, it's good for building capacity, and I have to tell you, the staff and the principals at those schools, they've undergone much more training than any of the other appraisers in the district, so, you know, we appreciate their efforts too, and the teachers.
Yeah, no, I totally support our participation in the pilot, so I guess my, to clarify my question, that is, it is our expectation that beginning 2014, or 2013, 2014, or 2014, 2015, we will begin utilizing a new evaluation tool for the teachers.
Can I address that?
It would be most appropriate. We'll be back in touch with you regarding options in the spring. And that may be a plan that's fully developed with the input of all of our stakeholders. It may be a consideration for participation in the beta pilot to see what the state has fleshed out, depending upon if, if the methodologies they use include such things as student feedback that we discussed, student value measures. One of the interesting things that's going to be to see is, when we look at value-added measures, that's such a catch-all term. Most of the more robust state appraisal systems from states other than Texas include measures of more than just one test, more than just one level of appraisal. In fact, the ones that I find are coming up with the best results are ones that the teachers are allowed to select, or at least have some self-autonomy of selecting separate measures of appraisal. When you look at the Harrison system, for example, out of Colorado, where Dr. Miles, who's now in Dallas, came from, teachers select eight different measures with varying weights that comprise the student performance score. When you look at Austin, at the REACH schools, at their pilot schools they have there, teachers are responsible for selecting multiple measures. In Houston, they're responsible for selecting at least two measures of student performance. So, it's not just one test, one day, this is half or more of your appraisal. It's a true snapshot of the student performance over time across multiple methodologies.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just trying to kind of back up from the timeline, if, if, if our goal is to implement a new appraisal system beginning 2013, 2014, are we still on that timeline? Is that reality? I mean, is that a possibility?
I think, I think the, the reality here is that we will have a framework for the board to consider in the spring, and, and then, it's really up to, you know, the, the other moving piece is the state and their requirements and their laws that they're going to implement and any changes that could happen this, even this legislative session with regard to appraisals and things like that. But what we will commit to is having a framework, at least that's our intent, to have a framework for the board to consider, that includes student surveys or student engagement-type pieces and things like that, because that has to be, I think, vetted out at the board level, because it's ultimately the, the board's decision in terms of appraisal instrument and that we use. So, the RFP or RFQ is for that framework, so that we can develop it and bring it back to the board in the spring. Whether we're going to be ready to implement it in the fall of, I guess, 13, would be up to how we vet it out at the board level, really.
So, when it comes to us as a framework, you mean, there would be a finalized, there's already, the appraisal is already in place, and it's just how we weigh it, or?
No, I think, I think what you'll get is options, options to consider. When we talk about performance pay, the kind of questions that we just touched on briefly today, I mean, tonight, are things that I think have to be vetted out at the board level to set that new appraisal? Is it more than one appraisal? Is it more than one observation? Does it include student performance? What weight do we give it? Do we adopt one that the state, we would know closer to that level of this, what the state's direction is, and does that have the components we want or not? So, I think, I think the RFQ is going to give us that information, but it is really going to be dependent on how we vet it out at this level, because that's where the decision is made.
Yeah, and what I'm, and I'm focusing on, on our level of success, and I want to make sure that, as we look at, when we put a target for a year, that we're successful in reaching it, I want to make sure that we're practical, reasonable, and realistic.
Yeah.
Because by that time, our budget's already kind of, already being set, and if we're just looking at the framework in the spring, and we got to approve a budget relatively quickly, we may look, be looking at, you know, really implementing something like this in year three. And if that's the case, let's just, you know, as soon as we can, let's decide, yes, this is a year-three implementation schedule, rather than a year-two implementation schedule.
Can you say something, Ron? Yes, sir, if I may. When looking at, if we choose not to go with the state's adopted model, whatever that may be, and we look to include some of these components on our own for a locally-developed model, and speaking with the representatives of Austin, it cost them over $300,000 in nearly a year and a half to develop the student component. They use it from kindergarten to 12th grade, but they get student feedback on their teachers. Now, in kindergarten, it's done with smiley faces, and they've found that they get really bad data in kindergarten, because everybody likes a smiley face. Nobody wants the frowny face. And so, the student feedback that they get in terms of student satisfaction, when students leave kindergarten and go to first grade, drops dramatically. And so, I would feel more comfortable to make sure that we did it correctly, to make sure that we had time to invest wisely to, that it perhaps would be more of a year-three option.
Yeah.
And also, the other thing to consider is that that's when the state will transition in 14, 15. And so, we were going to have to make a decision at that point, and it'd be a comprehensive decision along the way, I think.
And you know I'm one to push hard, to do fast, but this is too important.
Yes, sir.
To, to, to push it through, just to meet, you know, an arbitrary timeline that we set for ourselves of year two. As much as I'd like it, I want to get it right, want to make sure all this, all the different options are vetted out, the stakeholders are, input is taken into account, we designed something really, really strong. And besides, frankly, I think we, we still have other levels that we can look at before we even get to the teachers, so we've talked about the principals and all that, so.
You're right.
If, if we need to move it to year three, then as soon as you guys are ready to make that recommendation, I think it needs to be made.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mrs. Solans.
Thank you. Mr. Papa, I agree with you that we want to make sure we have adequate input, time for collaboration, time for deep thought. This is an important process, so I think we don't, I certainly don't want us to rush it. But I had a question for you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones.
Some time back, I remember reading that TEA was also looking at a principal appraisal pilot.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
And I don't know, are we not part of that, or is that process going on in parallel? Or what's, what's going on with the principal appraisal at TEA?
Yes, ma'am, they're still looking for information. In fact, they're not planning to make a recommendation regarding the new principal appraisal model until 2014. And so, it'll, it'll be interesting to see how that develops through the upcoming legislative session, to see if any changes are made with that process. But 2014 is the, the implementation date for that, but they've not released much information regarding that yet.
Thank you.
Let me just clarify something for Mrs. Peña. The principal, let's say, in an elementary school, going into a classroom to evaluate a teacher, if that's the first time that principal's been in that classroom, then that principal's not doing his or her job. He should, he, the principal should be in the classroom all the time, okay? So, they, in fact, like you were saying, the observation is really going on all year, because the principal's giving feedback right away to that teacher on the spot. At some point... At some point, then you're having an evaluation on Wednesday, and that's going to be it, okay? You should have incorporated all the things that I've told you that you need to do better for that day.
Right. And I agree, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Not, not somebody, let's say, I walk into a classroom, and I don't know this teacher. I've never been in the classroom before. I go in, and I do the appraisal.
Yeah.
That does not make sense to me, that I would be doing it when I have had no interaction with this individual.
Well, that shouldn't happen.
That was what my concern was.
Because the people on the campus are going to do the appraisals, whether it's the principal, the assistant principal, or master teachers or mentor teachers, which is my job. So it's not a surprise. In my building, every teacher will be evaluated four times each year. Plus, you probably have a walkthrough, which means somebody's going to come in and sit in your room for 10 or 15 minutes at least once a week. So you're getting observed all the time.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
It just, I'm saying, let's say the principal is new, walks in two days later, and then does a written appraisal of that, that I cannot, I cannot.
Well, I doubt that's going to happen, because that principal has to get certified to be an appraiser.
Yes, ma'am. And we, I've encouraged our principals for our four pilot campuses, and they are doing so. They're conducting very frequent walkthroughs.
Close little.
In addition to the formal appraisal models, the announced and the unannounced, they're doing walkthroughs and giving feedback. In fact, Mr. Nix and Mr. Meeks from Carter were here tonight, and I was looking at their walkthroughs as part of the appraisal, and they've been giving very consistent, very timely, very useful feedback for their teachers as part of the process. The same is occurring on the other campuses.
Well, would we have something in place, so let's say we now, we are, let's, we're being informed about retirements?
Sure.
We know a principal's going to retire at the end of December. Do we have anything in place that says that before that principal can leave, they have to have done their appraisals for the staff that's on that campus, so that one, someone who has been with them that year completes a document that provides for the ending appraisal? Do we have anything like that in place?
No, ma'am.
See, that makes sense to me as well, because then they're getting, whoever's being appraised is getting a fair evaluation from someone who has had that interaction with them. And it becomes part of the compilation of the ending one. Those types of processes make sense to me.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's why I was asking those questions, Peter, or President Barron.
Thank you. We're going to skip the natural gas fund until some future time. And Board of Trustees, on September 20th at 11:30 PM, will convene in closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the purposes as outlined in your agenda. We will not be coming back into open session.